Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Pittsburgh Public Schools Board of Directors Public Hearing. Tonight is Monday, March 24th, 2025. Before we start, I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments. One, I want to acknowledge that, you know, the work that we've been doing up to this point, a lot of it is really hard, and it certainly is not and has not been perfect. We and I share many of the same concerns that many have expressed and some will express tonight, but I believe this board is committed to ensuring that all information is provided, both in a relevant fashion, but also in a timely manner, so that decisions can be made appropriately. We'll continue to invite the public to share their thoughts about what they want and expect from us as a board and from a school district. We're committed to listening, changing when appropriate, and responding responsibly and respectfully to all viewpoints, even those that differ from our own. Tonight, we have quite a few folks on the agenda tonight, and so it will take some time. I know in the past, when we've had, you know, large numbers of speakers, we've been able to split into multiple days. Unfortunately, because of scheduling, we're not able to do that, so we're going to have to power through everyone tonight. So I do appreciate your patience as we get through this and your participation. We will take planned breaks every 90 minutes to two hours for a short time, so folks can kind of stretch their legs. I'll give a signal for when that happens. And because of the number of folks, we will be rotating folks in and out of this room. So if you want to stay and listen to the public hearing, I believe we have a video screen set up in the holding area downstairs. Feel free to do that, but just know that there will be some transition. And unlike other public hearing days, you won't be able to stay in this room for the whole time, although I would welcome anyone who wants to hang out with us for five or six hours, I guess, because that's what it's going to take tonight. And then just last to note, everyone who has signed up will be given three minutes. When you walk up to the microphone, just press the button. The red light will come on. As you get close to your time ending, the light will start to blink, recognizing that there are 30 seconds left. You're only allowed to speak for the three minutes. You can't share your time or give your time to anyone else. And for those who weren't able to attend in person, you are able to submit your written testimony that will be attached to the public record when the video of this is put on the district website and other social media platforms tomorrow. Let's make sure I get everything. Our stakeholders can view the public hearing by clicking the link at the top of the district's homepage. And now we will proceed to our first reader, and Ms. Gandy will be moderating the start of this for us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. And our first speaker tonight is Shirley Anne Heel.
I have followed the public hearings regarding the unfair treatment of former Montessori teacher Ms. Stephanie Lepin by principal Kelly Meyer. Throughout my 41-year career with PPS, I too was subjected to toxic principles like her. In December of 2023, Ms. Stephanie Lepin was removed from her classroom by Kelly Meyer. After many attempts by parents/guardians, Kelly Meyer did not offer an explanation for Ms. Stephanie Lepin's removal. Ms. Stephanie Lepin was cleared in February 2024, but was conveniently transferred to another school that does not have a Montessori program. Why was Ms. Stephanie Lepin not reinstated at Montessori where she belongs? Why is Kelly Meyer not being held accountable for her unfair treatment of Ms. Stephanie Lepin? The only Black lead teacher, let me say that again, the only Black lead teacher. Some Montessori teachers have filed grievances, and still nothing has been done. Toxic principles like Kelly Meyer put fear in teachers who speak up by sabotaging their teacher evaluations, pretending there are no problems at Montessori definitely creates an unsettling work environment. Teachers should not have to adapt to this leadership style to keep their jobs. Some principals are good for conveniently cutting positions when you speak up. I definitely have been witness to that. I question how students are first when toxic principles are not held accountable. Carrick High School has a very small percentage of Black teachers. I quote, "Research shows that having a teacher of color can help students of color reach better outcomes, but the benefits extend to all young people, preparing them to live and work in an increasingly diverse society." This is from Edutopia, June 26, 2020. Even though it's almost five years old, it still is pertinent. Black students at Carrick matter. Computer applications should be a mandatory business elective class for all incoming freshmen. During my time at Carrick, some English teachers, CTE ITL, and the CTE director have indicated the importance of this class. Freshmen are not getting the necessary skills in middle school. When it is time to do a project, some of them are lost. While at Carrick, I have helped students many times navigate through the necessary software to complete their projects. Quite often, teachers require students to do projects that utilize Microsoft Word, PowerPoint, and Excel. These skills are beneficial to students beyond high school. I'm done.
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker this evening is Denise Tyler.
I would like to share some information and concerns regarding the closing of the Student Achievement Center, SAC, which is the district's only alternative school for students to make up credits. Please keep in mind, ERS did not recommend the closing of the only credit recovery alternative school. Do you know we used to take overage middle school students who were not in their correct grade for various reasons, but at the end of this year, that program is cut? This means 13- and 16-year-old students will now be in the classroom with the younger students in fourth through eighth grade. Do you know we take students who are behind on credits for various reasons? Homelessness due to a variety of reasons, loss of parents, truancy, academics move from a different school district. Do you know we take students from other cities, states, and countries who are credit deficient? We give them the opportunity to gain a high school diploma in a timely manner. It is not their fault they are new to the district and lack the required credits. Do you know we take students for safety reasons? Do you know we take students because they are unsuccessful in their home school due to the influence of their friends, large class sizes, discipline issues, et cetera? Do you know students who attend SAC can still participate in their home school's sports, activities, and CTE programs? Do you know we keep students because their home schools do not want them to return to their building for various reasons? Do you know students can only make up two classes in a school year if they only use period 10 to recover credits in their home schools? SAC offers edgenuity and four semesters instead of two. Do you know students do not stay after school to participate in period 10 because they may have other after-school responsibilities, such as activities, work, sibling responsibility, childcare issues, et cetera? This was also mentioned in the meeting on February 25th by the superintendent as to why it may be difficult to change the school starting and end time for high school students due to students working after school. Do you know that only using period 10 for credit recovery is not enough time for many students to make up their credits because they failed more than two classes in a school year? Do you know we keep students because they do not want to return to their home school for various reasons? One of the main reasons is because they are successful at SAC. Do you know we take students who have stopped attending school for multiple years, only to return to finish their credits to obtain their high school diploma? Do you still think it's a good idea to close the only alternative school within the district that offers students the opportunity to make up multiple credits and be successful graduates at PPS? No, it is not. PPS is leaving many students with no other option but to drop out. Close the building if you must, but closing the program instead of relocating it as suggested by ERS is a big mistake and an even bigger disservice to our students. As a board member previously mentioned at the February 25th meeting, just because it is feasible doesn't mean we should. No, you should not close SAC, especially if PPS's motto is "Students First, Always, and Always." Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker, Katie Rank Laff.
Hello. I have three PPS students. I am active in the PTO at all my children's schools, and I'm an active participant in the District Parent Engagement Council, or PAC, whatever that stands for these days. But I participate in all of these meetings, whether that's online or in person, and I even watch the long ones. So I wasn't sure what to say tonight that hasn't already been said. However, I'm a little appalled and feel the need to clarify what many parents mean when we say we would like a transportation plan in place before voting to close schools. We are not talking about knowing our children's bus route number or what time to be at the stop in the morning. I have strategy questions about transportation. Like, why is my house .7 miles from Sterrett Middle School, but my children are bused two miles to Colfax? At the ERS meeting at Alderdyce High School earlier this spring, the principal of Lincoln spoke out and enumerated hundreds of students who could walk to Lincoln but are zoned for Colfax and bused there. Busing students to schools other than the ones that they can walk to is a strategy. That is a transportation strategy. The closure proposal seems like it will increase busing needs for elementary-age students, particularly on the north side. What is the strategy for how these north-side Spring Hill kindergarteners will get their butts in seats that the demographer designates as assigned to their address? Will the district continue to rely on city buses for middle schoolers if you move SciTech to the Millions Building in a neighborhood without robust bus service? These are questions of feasibility, which the Oxford English Dictionary defines as "the state or degree of being easily or conveniently done." We parents are often accused of criticizing suggestions without offering alternatives. The Community Driven Plan has considered transportation strategies. It is worth reading and worth listening to. I'm asking you all to read it along with the demographer reports before voting to close any buildings. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Jamie Lynn Reish.
Hi. I'm here representing the Student Achievement Center as well, and I am really concerned that people don't know how valuable we really are. To start with, I sent you guys some charts today that we have gotten data from, and I'm only going to go over the whole one because obviously I don't have the time. But this has our ninth-grade status students as the first semester of school and how many credits they are already missing. And you can look over that. We have 92 freshmen missing already a class, 48 already missing two, and that goes up and up and up. You've got 15 kids already missing eight classes, so they're failing everything currently. So it was said that credits could be made up in the home schools, but there's been no information as to how. Period 10 is only making up two credits, summer school four. We can give students four semesters in one whole year, giving them well over eight credits to make up that they need to. Students don't sit on ingenuity with us like they do those programs. Some kids have some ingenuity classes, but we are in-class, in-person, they're doing extra work and projects to make up those credits. Many of our students are not thriving in the traditional school, which is obvious. They need the smaller, more personal classes to be successful. We are your only high school that is a star school, and we have gotten it four times out of the last eight years, and three of those years were COVID, and there was none. We take special 12s, the 19, 20, 20-year-olds that should have graduated, and you personally dropped off a 20-year-old the very next day after the feasibility meeting, asking us to take him and help him after we found out we were being closed. So as I already said, we take kids for safety concerns. When fights occur, you guys split them between us and, what's the other alternative school? Oh, Clayton. And we take kids from their schools for safety reasons. I currently have a student that cannot be at his school because he is at risk. These are things that cannot be done at the home schools. So considering the original plan has us moving to Roosevelt, I hope you truly learn what we actually do at our school to help the graduation rates of this district and students to get back on track to their schools. So please keep SAC open for our students. These kind of students deserve a place to go. And I also gave you a specific high school, if you want to look at that data and see how many of those ninth-grade status students and how many credits they are missing. And we have a bunch of the schools, but obviously there's not time to show you everything. But I really hope you consider our kids that need the extra attention and to be at SAC. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker, Andy Cubis.
Hello. I'm here today for two reasons. First, I join the chorus of voices urging you to delay the vote to close schools. There is still so much data that you need to inform your votes. New attendance zones, the feasibility of transportation, the basic price tag. Why are we rushing into a vote that could have such devastating consequences for this city, especially during this week that the Department of Education has just been annihilated? Closing schools should be the absolute last resort. To me, it feels like we're giving up on public education and surrendering to the charter schools that will circle the waters. Instead, why aren't we fighting for more state funding? Why aren't we all working together on a campaign directed at state lawmakers to fully fund our schools? In Seattle, they're working together on something called the Billion Dollar Bake Sale. Show us you care about the future of PPS by demanding the money from the state that it will take to build and support the schools our students deserve instead of closing them down. I'd like to see the district spend the same amount of time, energy, and attention to attract more families to the district. We know we are outperforming charter schools, and those students are starting to come back. Let's have conversations about figuring out how to get more children of all income brackets into our amazing early childhood programs. I know there are policy and funding hurdles to overcome, but as your head of early eggs said in her presentation to the board last year, the vast majority of families whose kids attend PPS early childhood programs stick with the district through high school. What can we do to fill the under-enrolled schools with more of the city's preschoolers? We can't close our way to equity in schools. We can't close our way to excellence. We can't even close our way to a balanced budget. Closing schools sends a message that communities are disposable, but investing in them says they matter. Please, let's hit the pause button before going forward with your irreversible damage that comes with closing schools. Let's make sure we've tried everything else first. Switching gears, I would also like to offer into the record a request to the district to share with PPS families a flyer about safe gun storage and to adopt a secure storage resolution, as many districts have across the country. The flyer was created by Every Town for Gun Safety as part of their Be Smart campaign to remind people that securing guns safely can save lives. As our federal government steps away from sensible gun control measures, it's really up to us to take action and educate parents and students about the importance of secure firearm storage. Sharing this flyer through Peach Jar would be such a small and easy step, and I've submitted a copy with my testimony and hope it can be shared with families soon. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker this evening is Randy Green.
Good evening. My name is Randy Green, and I'm a life skills support teacher at Pittsburgh Conroy. I've had the privilege of teaching in Pittsburgh Public Schools for 20 years, with 16 of those years spent here at Conroy. Tonight, I stand here as their voice. Our students may not always have a voice of their own, but I sure do. Conroy is not just a program, it's a place, a place of safety, a place of comfort, a place of consistency. At Conroy, our students are more than numbers. Our class sizes are small, yes, but that's because federal guidelines require it. However, that doesn't mean that our students do not deserve the space. Some of our classrooms may have eight students in a class, but with those eight students come four dividers, six bookshelves, eight rolling carts, three carols, two beanbags, one small trampoline, and many other items in which our students require. Although, Conroy, the program is not closing, let's talk about what doors are being closed on our students with the most significant needs. The door to meaningful, community-based instruction, where our students have built relationships with community members, closed. The door to a fully functional kitchen classroom, where students learn life skills to one day hold a job or live independently, closed. The door to our expansive gym, weight room, bikes, and a climbing wall, closed. The door to a nearby field within a minute walk, where our athletes practice and our events are held, closed. The door to our de-escalation rooms, where students with the most significant behavioral needs can safely calm down, closed. The door to our sensory room for students with autism to meet their sensory needs, closed. The door to a large auditorium, where students perform musicals and assemblies, closed. The door to accessible transportation via the bus, the T in storefronts that prepare our students for independent living, closed. The door to a large welcoming cafeteria, where students have space to eat, socialize, and stay safe, closed. The door to an indoor play area for our younger students to safely socialize and engage without ever leaving the building, closed. The door to pod-style classrooms, in which only two classrooms are next to one another, and our students have the space in the hallway to calm down or take a break without interfering with other classrooms, closed. The door to privacy with large classroom bathrooms for our most severe students to receive individualized care, closed. These aren't just rooms or spaces, they're essential parts of our students' lives. Removing them isn't just about shifting a physical location, it's about taking away opportunities for growth, independence, and safety. Conroy isn't just a building, it's a lifeline for our students. They don't deserve less, they deserve more. If we are truly a district of putting students first, I ask you to consider the immense impact this will have on those with the most significant needs. Please, please, don't close the doors at Pittsburgh Conroy.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker, Vanessa DeGavere.
Hi. Please do not vote to begin the process of closures until the demographer is able to submit the pertinent information needed. The board and the public needs time to digest it, to make changes to the current plan. We need to support students and teachers during this chaotic national time. We could lose Title I, Title II, Title IV, IDEA. Changes may be necessary in the district, but until there is an updated feeder zones, busing plans, financial analysis, and the demographer's report, how can we gamble on our children's education? And in regards to upcoming school board elections, if a candidate is endorsed by a pro-privatization group, they may not be a good choice for a public school board. And sadly, there are many people working in the public sector that are for privatization. We need a growth mindset from our leaders. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker, Nina Louise DeGavere.
Hello. My name is Nina Louise. I would like to invite you to visit my school, Walsworth. We have wonderful classrooms, teachers, and students. My favorite part of STEAM is A for Arts. Having STEAM in our schools means we will always have art. Let's keep schools open that are teaching everyone. Let's invite everyone to join the public school. Don't give up on us. It's time to grow and shine.
Thank you, Nina, for your testimony. And our next speaker is Megan Ballow.
Good evening. My name is Megan Baylog, and I am a life skills teacher at Conroy. As special education teachers, we spend most of our time analyzing data and using those numbers to benefit the needs of our kids. At the meeting in February, you asked questions about numbers, and I too have a few questions about the numbers. First, did you know Conroy is home to 196 students, and that number is constantly growing? You might be able to look that number up on the school website, but do you know what you can't find on the website? The fact that all 196 students were referred to us by teachers, staff members, and administrators in the district because they couldn't provide the services, support, or space needed for any of those students in their schools. As a special education center, and even more importantly, a public education center, by law, we are required to provide FAP for all students who are referred to us, some of whom are not welcome in schools like Children's or Watson. Conroy currently has 24 home rooms. Southbrook only has 16. It was said Conroy will stay, Conroy, so will you enlighten us on where the other eight classrooms will be going? How can you say we are staying, Conroy, if there aren't even enough classrooms for our current students? Conroy currently has four spaces set aside for related services. Where will they go if we already don't have enough classrooms? Conroy currently has three calm-down areas, as well as one sensory room. Again, if there aren't enough classrooms for our students in the proposed new location, where will our students go in a time of need for self-regulation and sensory stimulation? You say Southbrook will have a portable stage for performances in the gym. Is there enough bleacher space for 200 students plus staff to enjoy performances? Keep in mind, there are some students who may need more space to participate in school-wide events than just in a signed bleacher space. If we have students who are not able to attend the event for sensory needs, where will they go? Will they have to stay in their classrooms? Currently, we have alternate spaces in our building now where they can go to get their energy out. Can you also provide that to us? You say Conroy doesn't have a suitable outdoor space for our kids, but it does have two indoor leisure areas for students in which they have access to all year round. You say we can use the playground at West Liberty until upgrades are done, but the students of Pioneer Now have limited access according to their LRE plan, so adding another 200 students in the mix would be quite the challenge. You make your decisions based on numbers and a budget. As teachers, we too make decisions based on numbers, but we make our decisions to better the lives of all of our students and families who walk in our doors. If you say you are going to make these renovations to Southbrook, can you honestly say all of the renovations will be done before we step foot on that campus? We have everything we need at 1398 Page Street. We don't need a new garden or a four-person therapy pool, we just want to stay at our current school.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is Danika Hopkins.
Good evening. My name is Danika Hopkins. I'm here today to express my concerns about the proposed transfer of Conroy Education Center to Southbrook Middle School for the 2026 school year. My daughter, Jada Hopkins, has been a student at Conroy for over 10 years. Before Conroy, she attended Arlington Elementary in a life skill classroom. Jada's teacher at the time told me about Conroy and all the benefits that Conroy had and how it would be in my daughter's best interest to attend Conroy, because Conroy specializes in children with special needs. As I stated in previous board meetings, I am deeply concerned about how this change will have a negative impact on the educational and skills opportunities available to my child and children of Conroy. Conroy's current location provides the prime location for vocational training programs, community-based training programs, and independent living skills. Jada has blossomed into the beautiful flower that she is today thanks to Conroy. I don't understand how a special needs school was added to the list after the first list was posted. Me and a couple of Conroy parents spoke to Ms. Camper a couple weeks ago, and I asked, what's the reason for the proposed transfer? We were told that Conroy is an old building that needs repairs, and one of the biggest repair is a new roof that would cost $8 million to replace. If that move takes place, there will be an architect to draw the plans for a contractor to do renovations. A new playground will be built because Southbrook does not have one. Personal vans will be purchased for transportation for students to travel to workforce sites because nothing is close to Southbrook. Conroy is in walking distance to restaurants, stores, buses, and the trolley station. It also shows the students how to safely cross the street, learn how to ride buses and trolleys, that helps them navigate now and when they graduate. There will be no more CAD program because there will not be enough space at Southbrook, and there's enough space at Conroy. With all these renovations to Southbrook, why can't that money be used to repair Conroy? Because that actually sounds like a lot of money to me that y'all would put into Southbrook to create a new Conroy. The specialized services and resources here at Conroy are unique, and we would not be able to find them elsewhere regardless of the changes made to Southbrook. I understand things change in life, but a move would be incredibly disruptive to our children, who are already dealing with unique challenges. This is why we are here fighting this proposed transfer. I am fighting for my daughter, I'm fighting for her peers, I'm fighting to keep Conroy at at 1398 Page Street. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Kathy Hartman.
Good evening, everybody, and I thank you for inviting us back to speak to you once again. I'm here to support Conroy Education Center. My son Joey Hartman is a senior there, so he will be graduating next year, but thanks to all the hard work and dedication from everybody at that school, I got a phone call while I was on my way to come over here tonight. Joey's going to be accepted to Life Works next year once he graduates because he has picked a vocation and he's going to be training there once he graduates next year. I'm fighting for the children that are coming up behind Joey because I think they all deserve the same education that Joey received at Conroy so that they can become productive adults. The businesses and the residents in the Manchester and Northside area have opened their doors and opened their hearts to our students. I worked at Accra Shore Stadium for about 10 years now and I visit the 7-Eleven on Western Avenue almost every morning. When I walk in the doors, I'm greeted by the employees who say to me, hi Joey's mom, where's Joey? Nobody there knows my name, they've never asked my name, they want to know where Joey is and they tell me how much they look forward to seeing our Conroy students when they're out in their community walks and they sometimes stop in there to make a purchase. They said visits from Conroy students just make their day. Another issue I have is with the bathroom situation if we move Conroy. These bathrooms that we have at Conroy are like one bathroom to every two classrooms and a majority of our students, including my own son, were not able to potty train at an early age. Joey is now 20 and was recently diagnosed with a liver issue which causes him to sometimes have to be in the bathroom right then and right now. Knowing that we have this bathroom has helped him maintain his privacy and his dignity and privacy and prevented him from having embarrassing accidents. This may not be a big deal to you or me, but this is a necessity for our students to have these bathrooms. We also have a large field, basketball courts and a playground right across the street from Conroy. Our students can go out there every day to get fresh air, exercise, something they may not be able to have access to at home. Conroy also has one of the best Special Olympic teams in Allegheny County, thanks to Mr. Eric's guidance and love for our students. Having this in our neighborhood gives our students a chance to practice their sports skills, that's why they're so good. Last point is we're told that Conroy needs a new roof. That could be $8 million to replace. I'm no mathematician, but I can definitely gather from everything that we know Southbrook is going to need, it's going to be a heck of a lot more than $8 million. I will not be there when this close happens, but if we can keep Conroy, I would be willing to start a GoFundMe page to raise the money. We need to fix that as well as call every roofer in the city of Pittsburgh if that's what it takes to get it donated for these kids. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Martha Reek.
In Dr. Walters' recent op-ed in the Post-Gazette, these words spoke to me, "We have the data." I must respectfully disagree. We clearly do not have the data necessary to move forward with any specific plans to close specific school buildings. The ERS plan is lacking in data, particularly when it comes to demographics, transportation costs and capital improvements plans and long-term costs. Considering the creation of this plan was driven by concerns about our budget deficits, you'd think we'd be looking at some financial estimates, not final, but just some basic financial estimates. ERS themselves recommended that a demographer be hired to determine feeder patterns and attendance zones, transportation plans, staffing impact analysis, projected savings, cost analysis of closures, including new expenditures for improved programming and an overall budget impact statement. Tonight, I am asking you to vote no on the resolution to start the process to permanently close 10 school buildings. It makes absolutely no sense to even begin considering closures of 10 specific buildings when we do not yet have financial data or projections. At public hearings like this and the community-based meetings for the ERS plans, hundreds of parents have stood in front of you and asked about this. When we asked, was this feasible, we asked that you gather data and determine if it was actually feasible. We weren't just asking if the executive committee thought it was feasible. We honestly, for the good of our community, would want to know if this plan could possibly work because we do know we have a responsibility to act for the good of all PPS students. We want to see investments in capital improvements in every facility that the district continues to use. We want to see equitable access to foreign language education, to arts education across the district. We are not objecting to change just because we think it's fun to object to change or because we think that the PPS footprint should never change. We are here and we have been speaking out because we need to know that you actually have real data, accurate data, that you need to make smart decisions and that you are going to look at that data before we decide what school buildings should be closed forever. Please hire that demographer, complete the financial analysis, this absolutely has to be undertaken before anything is voted on because without this data, any specific plan about which buildings you keep open and close will be lacking. Where does the school age population in Pittsburgh reside now? Where will it reside in the next two years, the next five years, the next 10 years? What will it look like if more families start to opt into the district? What will it look like if more families move out? Before you move forward with any formal process, you need to start with a plan that is based on demographic data and has clear financial...
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker is Mimi Welsh. And we'll move to the next speaker, Rebecca McLean.
Like many PPS parents, I regularly make hard choices about priorities. In my case, managing family logistics and medical concerns often takes precedence, precedence, sorry, to attending in-person public hearings. And as a federal employee in the current political environment, my stress levels are pretty much always elevated. As a result, it's been almost a year since I was last here. I've reviewed the testimony I gave regularly last spring and I'm struck by how hopeful and optimistic I sounded about the facility's utilization process and how frustrated I am now that we're a year deeper into this. This process has proven to me the administration and a significant portion of the board are not really interested in authentic, meaningful community input. Fortunately, there are two examples of efforts happening in the city right now that you can compare with your own process. The first is Pittsburgh Regional Transit Bus Line redesign. It's a major revamp of bus routes throughout the city and county. It's a two-year planning process that included multiple rounds of robust community engagement, including at least 23 pop-up events meant to meet people where they were and engage them with route changes informally. This process is very transparent and I encourage everyone here tonight to take a look at the Bus Line redesign website to see what questions are being asked and answered, what notes are being shared and how you can still get involved in that planning process, especially since PPS relies on PRT buses to transport students like mine. The second is the city's comprehensive plan. Pittsburgh's embarking on its first citywide comprehensive plan to have a document that guides decision-making across the city. The city had a big kickoff meeting in January and is emphasizing community engagement as a top priority for the multi-year planning process. The state municipality's planning code requires the city to consider neighborhood resources, including educational facilities, in its planning process. In contrast, our facility's utilization plan had community input that was rushed and adversarial with ERS, leading questions designing to guide participants to an answer that you already wanted. We were told this was fast to make changes for the 25-26 school year, then a change and delay to plans for the 26-27 school year and the recent feasibility presentation didn't give the board members or the public any more information than the report from the consultant already had months earlier. Now you're being asked to vote about closing schools well in advance of the timing that is required to make changes to the 26-27 school year, without all the information everyone's been asking for. Voting to open this process now is premature and continues the district's pattern of being non-transparent and expecting parents who have been ignored or patronized to still get out of the way. I appreciate my District 2 board member Devon Talafaro and her continued willingness to call out problems as she sees them. Thank you especially for your comments during last week's agenda meeting where you channeled frustration so many of us are feeling. This entire process, the continued minimization of parent concerns, including the alternative plan that many parents felt the need to participate in because they weren't being heard during the ERS process, is unfortunate indeed. I urge you all to consider how your choices are contributing to district instability, continued declining enrollment and especially with the uncertainty of how the workforce...
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Jessica Wadniski.
Hello, my name is Jessica Wadniski and my son is a student at Conroy Education Center. I've spoken at these public hearings since November, each time focusing on a different reason why closing Conroy would be a huge injustice to the students, family, staff and the community of Manchester. When you raise a child like my son and like the other students who attend Conroy, one of the most basic rules to lead to the most amount of success is always having a plan. I need a plan for things as basic as running to the grocery store, all the way to things as serious as navigating my son's mental health. I have to plan for the unexpected. When I find something that works, something that yields a positive result, it's one less obstacle that I have to face in a world that is not very forgiving to my son. Conroy works. Conroy is that positive result that I look for when trying to build the most stable foundation I can for my kid. Conroy has everything that my child needs. One of the biggest issues with this entire plan to close our building is that there is no plan. We are being expected to move forward and extend our trust into the district when in history that has shown to be a flawed process. We are expected to trust that our children won't lose anything while looking at a typical middle school that an architect hasn't even been hired to assess. We are expected to trust that the district is being transparent when it wasn't even transparent in the original utilization plan that we were even at risk. We are expected to trust this plan to be in the best interest of our students when the only reason we are being given that we have to move is the cost of a roof. However, we are given no clarity on how that roof costs compares the immense renovations that Southbrook will need. We are expected to ignore the safety concerns that are very real with attaching ourselves to Pioneer because that's an uncomfortable topic that doesn't match the narrative. We are expected to believe that our children won't lose anything when one of our most important programs could be taken from our building and the community opportunities our students currently have are just being ignored. We can't move a building that holds our highest needs students on a maybe. I've stood here and listed time and time again with these kids risk losing, but I will say it again, since I have no other new information on this district plan since October of 2024. This move will take us away from a welcoming community with vast opportunities for vocational training, a future, a kitchen for future workers, a mental health program within our building to help not only the students but our families as a whole, a huge field and playground for Special Olympics and social skill building, large hallways for sensory needs, adequate bathroom space to maintain dignity, space for related services, an air-conditioned gym, auditorium for performances and ceremonies, a large welcoming cafeteria, ADL spaces, large classrooms, calm-down areas in an environment that has proven itself to be safe and capable of allowing these students to reach their best. I ask each of you to put yourself in my position for just a moment. Imagine finding a place where your child is safe, happy and making significant progress and then imagine that being taken away because a price tag for repairs is more important than your child's success. Would that feel equitable to you? Would you be willing to move forward on a maybe with so much to lose? Please consider the students when you vote. Please let my son continue to thrive in a building that meets him where he's at in a world that rarely does. Poor planning will equal poor performance. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker is Pam Harbin.
I am urging you to vote no on the resolution, item 1703, for multiple reasons. There's confusion about what a yes vote means. According to President Jean Walker, a yes vote gives Dr. Walters the green light to move forward with the incomplete facilities utilization plan, even though that is not written anywhere in the resolution. Dr. Walters has said his staff won't work on filling in the missing details of the plan until he knows the board is on board. So voting yes on Wednesday means you're on board and you're agreeing to support an incomplete plan. You should not vote on a resolution that has a hidden meaning. For the closure of the 10 school buildings listed on the resolution, if it passes, it authorizes a two-step process. Step one, there'll be a public hearing for each school on the list. Step two, at least three months later, there'll be a board vote to decide if the buildings will close. If the resolution passes on Wednesday, it approves both steps, meaning these 10 schools on the list can be put on the legislative agenda for a final vote. Dr. Walters will be the only one who can remove a school from the list. Board members cannot remove a school and this issue cannot be discussed in closed meetings. The resolution lacks dates for when the schools will close or when public hearings will occur. Past building closure resolutions had both. You should not give up your right to vote on this important timeline decision. The timeline decision should not rest with the superintendent or board president alone. For the past year, we've been shown several versions of the same plan and it's still incomplete. We still don't know when the buildings will close, how students will fit in the remaining schools, if there's enough teachers to staff the promised programs such as art, music, world languages, algebra and AP classes. ERS provided a proposed staffing model in their final plan, you should look at it, but they also pointed out that Dr. Walters must first determine staffing needs. Without a demographer's study, you won't know how many teachers will be needed or if there are enough certified teachers in the content areas and new grade band configurations, especially given teacher shortages. Unless we have a plan that's proven to be feasible, using the necessary data, including the demographer's study, more public feedback is just meaningless. Until that study is done, we cannot know if the plan is truly workable. There's only one next step you should take. Vote on a demographer.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker this evening is Brandon Simpson.
My name is Brandon Simpson. I'm here in support of Principal Goran and keeping Martha King open. Martha King being a community school is faced with a unique challenge. It's a community school in the middle of so many different communities servicing the Northside. Most of the backgrounds of these students come from low-income housing, project surroundings and a lot of us know how that may be the outcome. Even though we know so many aspiring stories that uplift from those backgrounds, there's a lot of stories that can't be changed. And Principal Goran and her staff, they really bring the community to those kids. They take time to get to know those kids as individuals. Ever since COVID, I seen that school do a complete 360 from the different programs they brought in, the way they got the students more under control than they ever been. They allow the kids to uplift each other. There's different programs as far... My son's, my son's going, he's in the fourth grade. He been in the leadership programs every since the first grade. They allow the students to help each other. There's different leadership, like I said, leadership programs, they got different opportunities. I know they got the opportunity for the middle school kids to go to Washington DC every year. It's just being a community school, fighting the fights that they fight with the different backgrounds and the kids and the parents trying to get everybody involved. Principal Goran does a wonderful job just making everybody feel special, feel noticed. And the kids, as many problems and challenges they face, the kids get a sense of love when they step into that building. That's all I got to say.
Thank you for your testimony. And now we'll have Brayson Simpson.
My name is Brayson Simpson. And I want to keep my school open for all the friends I have, the teachers, the classes and... Like I was saying, the teachers, the classes, the friends I have in the school. I don't know what else to say, so...
Thank you Brayson for your testimony. And our next speaker is Sarah Zango.
We didn't start the...
We didn't start the fire. No, we didn't light it, but we're trying to fight it. These children are the future. If we work together, we can make it better. Boston writes the RFP, then gets hired to come and see which schools stay, which go, and communities, they don't know. ERS takes the blame for all the admin games. Dr. Walters, you're the man. Just own it. It's your plan. Restoration left behind, school-to-prison pipeline, ridiculous inequities with no transparency, virtual hearings gone away, board overworked and unpaid, losing students all the time, managed cycles of decline. We didn't start the fire. No, we didn't light it, but we're trying to fight it. These children are the future. If we work together, we can make it better. Trump's after DOE, immigrants, LGB, trans rights already gone, Elon's on the White House lawn, no respect for civil rights, Nazi salutes in broad daylight, dogging civil liberties, driving inequities, living in uncertain times, people being left behind, eliminating DEI, little truth, lots of lies, erasing parts of history. It's up to us to look and see how to hold up our city, create safety locally. We didn't start the fire. No, we didn't light it, but we're trying to fight it. These children are the future. If we work together, we can make it better. Charters take a double dip without any consequence, draining money from the pot, certain ones quite a lot, worse outcomes in PPS, parents still choosing them. Why is that? We don't know. Did we ask? Why'd you go? We were asked for our feedback after a plan already set, ignoring those of us who show, saying to us, "You just don't know." Pushed you hard, this plan will fail, without knowing details. At this point in the game, demographer could change everything. We didn't start the fire. No, we didn't light it, but we're trying to fight it. These children are the future. If we work together, we can make it better. Planning for loss, not for growth, we are reaping what we've sown. You've asked us just to trust, and we say, based on what? Closing down our kids' schools without knowing what you'll do. Feeder patterns unknown, red boxes unacceptable, so many question marks. This plan's a shot in the dark. Timelines, attendance zones, finances, all unknown. Hitting hardest, those who need lots of consistency. Conroy, IAPs, kids with exceptionalities. We need a change, now's the time. If you do it right, we'll be fine. We could be the shining light. Pittsburgh gets a spotlight. Outcomes improve when behaviors change, so don't keep doing the same thing. Innovate, let's be brave. What else do we need to say? We didn't start the fire. No, we didn't light it, but we're trying to fight it. These children are the future. If we work together, we can make it better. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Jaslyn Worthy.
Okay. So if the goal is for every student to have access to the same level of excellence, why is there no clear path to get there? You, Dr. Walters, you stood there and you told your students or children that their voices matter. You stood there and you told your students or children that they deserve, and I quote, "rich, resource-rich schools." Please name me five rich resources that will be in any school left after the proposed closures. Because you aren't able to provide the five we asked for, you can't guarantee that outcome for them. You also mentioned, excuse me, at the Fourth Annual Student Voice Conference, Dr. Walters, that our children, and I quote, "Transformation requires action, and action begins with listening, truly listening to those most impacted by the decisions we make, and that's you." Your ear is not inclined to hear those most impacted, your youngest learners, who, by the way, weren't even invited to attend that event. They stand before you this evening and echo the same sentiment, even though you're too busy to look at me. Don't close our schools. It's hypocritical to say that you are listening and then proposing to move forward with a plan that they do not agree with. Dr. Walters also stated during that conference that we, the adults, are struggling and that we're selfish, that we are invested in this for personal reasons and that we ain't like them. All of those students, we carried in our wombs for nine months. Some of us almost dying, because y'all know how they do us in them hospitals. So if they're going to be like anyone, they gonna be like me or their daddy. They have the option of choosing only because we lead the way, not you. You told them that they have the moral imperative to always speak truth, so let's speak it. Board members, has Dr. Walters provided you with any information or even an example of the following? Feeder patterns, attendance zones, estimated budget, additional expenses? Has he given you resources and programs and transportation for his recommendation? If the answer you silently say to yourself is no, he's not doing his job. How's that for truth? You hold him accountable, and we hold you accountable. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker is Jaleah Hayden.
Hello, my name is Jaleah Hayden, and I'm a sixth grader currently attending Kappa. Take it from me, the Kappa experience is unlike any other. The opportunities, the resources, the investments are superior compared to other schools in our district with the 6th through 12th grade configurations. My brothers attend Woolslayer, and even though I never attended Montessori, if it is anything like Kappa, I know the skull isn't even. So the question I propose is, can it ever be the excellence for all of Kappa and Montessori remain superior even after the proposed changes take place? Is someone able to explain to me why that is? Do my siblings not deserve the experiences those students receive? Why can't every student experience the Montessori and Kappa experiences? Does the plan to move forward with these recommendations guarantee access to the same level of excellence for my brothers, for everyone not fortunate enough to be accepted into those two schools? Zig Ziglar, a motivational speaker and author, stated, and I quote, "A goal properly set is halfway reached." Does agreeing to move forward with the proposed changes and not setting a clear path on how to achieve it ensure excellence for all of us? Does providing us with no details about how we're going to get to school ensure excellence for all of us? Does eliminating magnet programs for every school except mine and Montessori's ensure excellence for all of us? The amount of information you have given us, your path to get us to your goals for us, require more than innovation. It requires time, it requires information, it requires more. As I am speaking, are you listening? I like to believe you all have our best interests at heart, but it is hard to see it when you don't want to invest the time and effort it's going to take to make sure our losses are for the betterment of our future. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And next is David Hayden.
Good evening, board members. My name is David Hayden. I am a fourth grader at Woolslayer. I'm here today to speak on behalf of what I would like to see in our school district. Are you listening? You speak of a future for me, and yet I am not supposed to be asked to speak on or make suggestions about it outside of public hearings. Do you believe that since I am an elementary school student, that I am not capable of having a conversation about what it is I would like to see for myself? And those I attend school with, my mom comes down to speak for me because she believes that I deserve a future you would want for your own children. My mom brings me down here to speak for myself because she believes that I... And I understand the power that comes from my voice. She doesn't think you should come close to our school or any school, and I agree. I agree that more time is needed to figure out. I agree that more time is needed, is need to come up with a plan and possible scenarios that generate our best outcomes for us. I understand that change is need to be made. There isn't enough students to fill our schools. I understand more than you think or me. And my schoolmates do not deserving of the time and effort it's going to take to make your plan for our future work. Are me and my schoolmates not deserving a seat at the table where our future is discussed? Or me and my schoolmates are not deserving of a seat for the annual student voice conferences? Their claims are that me, our futures, our voices are heard. I am a student. Why was I not there? The students speaking tonight, where they and attendance also. Just a little piece of advice, before I leave, if you come for our future, include us and come correct. Thank you.
Thank you, David, for your testimony. And next is Elijah Mitchell.
So I don't want my school to close because it's fun, and I don't want to lose all my friends because I have a point, because... It's fun, and I like math. Yeah. Ms. Mcilady. Yeah. Yeah. Because she wants to participate, too. Yeah. Wait, what? She wants to... Yeah? Want to participate? I don't want Woolslayer to close. Or any school. Thank you.
Thank you, Elijah, for your testimony. And next, we will have Mike Cummins.
Hello, you all know who I am. I'm Mike Cummins, parent to Trey at PPS, and my daughter is also here, who will be at PPS next year. I'm also one of the coordinators of the PPS Community Proposal. I want to talk about old models that we're presenting as new models. This proposal is exactly the same thing that every urban school has been doing, with a few exceptions, for decades, and almost all of them are failing. This is an old model. There's nothing innovative about it that has been presented yet, so why are we moving forward with exactly the same thing that has lost us thousands and thousands of students already? This is an economics problem. I'm not an educator. I am a businessman, and I have an economics minor. This is supply and demand. We are treating this like a supply-side economics situation, which does not work. When you give tax benefits to rich corporations, hoping they'll supply more stuff, that doesn't mean people will buy it. They have to have money, right? We are trying to do this from the top down and force a school model onto the public. Right now, we have a different situation where we have this thing called charter schools, and everybody has an option that is not PPS, and you don't have to have money to do that. That changes the entire dynamic of how schools used to work more than 30 years ago. The only way you're going to compete and succeed and thrive in that market is to use a demand-driven model to education. You create schools that people want to be in, they desire to be there, so that they do not choose charter schools that don't cost them anything and double-cost us, or private schools. We need to think about this as economics. The situation has changed from the '90s to today. We cannot operate like it's the '50s, '60s, and '70s when PPS was successful with a similar model to what is being proposed. So we need to create schools that are dynamic and that respond to the needs of the community that they serve. If we do that, we can stop the rate of attrition that's happening in PPS. Dr. Walters, I wanted to say thank you for scheduling a meeting with us. It's about six months late. We've asked a lot of times. I wish it had happened because you wanted to engage with our ideas and not because I was criticizing you on Facebook, but I'm happy to have the opportunity, and I hope it can be productive. If you are serious about actually engaging with different ideas, then voting four hours after our meeting to start a proposal that would close different schools than ours just says this whole thing is a show, right? Is this actually about community engagement, or are we just checking a box that we met with those obnoxious people? I would like this to be a collaborative effort, where we're working together instead of me constantly coming here to criticize, criticizing online, criticizing with the media, all those things. I'd also like to bring up numerous comments from...
Thank you for your testimony. And next is Elizabeth Cummins.
Good evening. As my husband was just saying, this administration's proposal does not have enough appropriate community engagement. I know that there were efforts made to get input from high school students, which is awesome. That's really great. That said, the facilities plan drastically affects our elementary and middle school students with little meaningful input from those students. Our young learners have voices, and they need to be heard, not through a survey, but through real community engagement. And their parents know a little something about what works for their kids as well as their families. Real engagement with the families of our younger learners is vital to a PPS future that parents and students can be on board with. Excuse me, just lost my script. Okay. When these families and students leave the district because they're obviously not being heard or valued, the vast majority won't come back for high school. We are accelerating the downward spiral of attrition. We need to find ways to ensure more equitable access to all kids in our city while also retaining the families we have and getting them engaged in the learning process. This engagement is the best driver for student outcomes. Attendance zones, where you force people to go to a school they don't want to go to, simply drives people out of the district. It will not fix a struggling school to arbitrarily try to force families to go there, regardless of their race, SES status, or any other factor. In these days, when charter schools are an option available to all people, we have to do more to give all families a reason to want to stay in the district. We need to create new opportunities for people of all income levels and backgrounds to attend schools that best suit their diverse needs and interests. As far as my family's concerned, we honestly don't know where our kids would go to school in the context of this proposal. We are lost in that big gray box. It's not fair to push forward with a proposal like this without even the basics figured out. Show the public you care about how this affects them. So probably beating a dead horse at this point, but I'll say it again, this is not sustainable for PPS. Continuing to lose so many families reduces the resources available for all kids of all needs, incomes, and backgrounds. We can do better. Please vote no on a school consolidation plan until a more developed database plan is available. We can all agree that significant change is needed, but please do not rush this process. Also, please leave Conroy where it is. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker is Bernard Mohan.
Good evening. My name is Bernard Mohan. I'm a parent of a Conroy student, and I am speaking out against the proposed closure of PPS Conroy. I strongly believe that closing PPS Conroy will have a negative impact on the growth and development of all students. The current location offers many supportive functions for all students who struggle with special needs. The location is close to the T to allow students access to downtown, and the Pittsburgh Cultural District to support community outing and learning experience for all students. Conroy is a short walk to the Carnegie Science Center, which also offers many learning activities. The new location has limited access to public transportation, and there is nothing in reasonable walking distance to support community outings for the students. The current location has a playground and field nearby for various outdoor activities. Conroy has a large auditorium, gymnasium, to allow the students to participate in school performances, exercise, and sporting activities. More importantly, Conroy has private restrooms that help support the students who need assistance with toileting. Some Conroy students also struggle with transition. A change in building location could be detrimental to those students and cause them to regress. There has not been anything outlined in the budget for building renovations at Southbrook to accommodate the Conroy students. The hallways at Southbrook are small, and they limit the sensory space that is required for Conroy students with sensory needs. Please consider all variables before making a final decision on the future of Conroy. Vote no on closing PPS Conroy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mohan, for your testimony. And our next speaker is Trey Cummins.
Hi, I am Trey Cummins, and I really like STEAM because of the technology. Hi, I am Trey Cummins, and I really like STEAM because of the technology. I really want everybody in PPS to be able to have an opportunity to do that.
Thank you, Trey, for your testimony. And next this evening is Emily Otter.
I didn't just enroll my son at Conroy. We've had to earn that school. Because before my little guy made it to Conroy, we'd already been to battle. We have had to fight for every developmental milestone and skill that my son has achieved, and then lost through regression, and then had to fight and try to earn back. See, progress isn't linear in my world, and it's overwhelming and exhausting to constantly have to anticipate what my son will need next to help him be successful in a world that doesn't always get him or want to see him as something greater than a perceived deficiency. But when we got to Conroy, my son started to be seen for his gifts. The school and community wanted him there, and maybe for the first time, he knew he belonged somewhere and is someone outside the safe bubble of our home. Suddenly, I didn't have to anticipate everything anymore, because the school already did that for us. From sensory accommodations to bathrooms that gave him dignity and support, to the way he's taught in the classroom, to the programs and the curriculum that the teachers fight to create and built into the school, to the community in which he walks and learned to engage, Conroy was made for my son. And this amazing thing happened. He started to grow. He has grown in confidence, in independence, in his happiness and his abilities, in his social skills, his comfort in the community, in his safety, and in our hope for his future. People keep showing up and speaking out for Conroy, because we know that you can't replicate this school, what this school does, just anywhere. Or Conroy wouldn't be the first, and frankly, maybe the only place where our kids experience this growth, respect, and support outside of our homes. This school is a very fragile ecosystem of teachers, curriculum, supports, resources, a community, and a building. So you have to treat Conroy with the respect it requires. You said your goal is to improve student outcomes, but the district isn't talking about Conroy's student outcomes. You're talking about our building costs. Conroy is a specialized school that will require extensive renovations and repurposing of any new building to try and just replicate the existing services, not even improve them. This isn't a move based on giving our students more. It's a move based out of the need to cut costs to our building. And I know that when we approach disabilities from a cost-savings perspective only, my son always ends up with less. And education is an area that I cannot and should not be asked to tolerate less in. I was raised in a household where we understood that to whom much is given, much is expected. And as a district, you have been given the responsibility to educate my son and all these students, even those with severe disabilities. And as a board, you have been given an aging historical building in Manchester that currently houses a specialized school that is critical to these students' outcomes. We're asking and expecting a lot from you and your roles, but please take Conroy out of the vote. I'm not even asking for no. You know it's not the right move for our kids. It's a smaller building that will cut services, and it's not going to improve their outcomes for your students with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And next, we have Yoda Robinson.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Nyota Robinson. I'm here as a proud parent of Woolslayer Elementary School, and I know that you all have decided to look at that as a school closure. And I would be the first one to tell you, as I've spoken to some of you all previously, about Pittsburgh Public Schools and some of my disappointment in the services that students, such as my son, who happens to have an extremely high IQ, but also is on the spectrum for autism. And I found that putting him in Pittsburgh Public Schools has given him an opportunity to socialize and also feel as though he is part of the community, because it is by my house. And if you all were to choose to close that school, I want to ask what happens to parents such as myself that have stepped outside of the norm to try to give their child community education, because that's what I call it. I told my son, my brother once went to Woolslayer. I always aspired to go to Woolslayer, because when I was a Pittsburgh Public School student, that was a gifted school. And I do want to express, you all have made tremendous strides, but I still feel that you all are missing some of the mark, and one of them would be closing Woolslayer. I do think the school, much like the other schools, are worth looking at, because there's a community value there that you can't find. And I think oftentimes, we overlook that as being one of the things that are special here in Pittsburgh. So I just wanted to take a moment to say that, as you all are thinking about this, I want you to think about parents like me, who have to figure out, where are you going to send your kid? How are those dynamics of getting up every day, preparing your child, and also explaining to them why they go to this school, why they're in this neighborhood, why this person is there? That matters to people, and it matters to people like my son and myself. So I just wanted to take a moment to say that. And also, I just want to implore upon you all, as you're making these decisions, I want you, please, to not forget about students who need special attention. The school board, I read not too long ago, you all had voted to not put more funds for special education, for after-school programs, and other supportive services for students that need IEPs and other students that have additional needs. And I'm just asking you all, look around the room, as I tell people when I speak about this out in public. Who helped you? Who took an opportunity and a chance on you and believed in you? Who went the extra step and the extra mile? My elementary English teacher still talks to me every day, and I'm 45 years old, and she lives in Texas. Because of her, I have a master's degree in English from... Excuse me, no, I have a master's degree in professional writing from Point Park, excuse me, from Chatham University, and an English degree from Point Park. And I mention that because...
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we'll have Erin Childs.
Good evening. My name is Erin Childs, and I'm the mother of three PPS students. Tonight, I'm urging you to vote no on starting the school closure process now. In many ways, this plan is simply not ready to move ahead. Our kids started out at our neighborhood school, which ended up not being a good fit for our family. So we turned to the magnet program and moved our kids to Woolslayer, and they've thrived there. Had the magnet program not existed, we would have needed to either move to another house or move our kids out of the public school system, both of which would suck. And that will be the situation for every K-5 family under the proposed facilities utilization plan. There are no options. There are no fallback plans. Kids, if your designated school doesn't work for you, either suck it up or leave. There aren't any options for the district under the facilities utilization plan either. As a district, we've been fighting about attendance zones for at least seven years. That's how long I've been here. And so we're finally going to pay a demographer to figure them out. But what happens after that? In a few short years, the schools will start differentiating again. People with money will game the system, move to the attendance zone for desirable schools, and steadily increase the affluence at those schools. Other schools will stagnate and shrink. Teachers will be overworked at one site and demoralized at the other. And then, the district is back at the drawing board, looking at schools that have become inequitable, and trying to figure out a new plan. We need to stop using the same old plan and find a new plan now. One option would be to use a regional model. There would be no attendance zones to fight about. The district gets more control over how many students are in each building, and the kids and families get more control over finding their best fit. Now, I know, under the current plan, all of the K-5 schools are supposed to provide the same foundation for all students. And when it comes to ensuring that each school has the baseline resources it deserves, including art, music, paraprofessional support, I think that sounds great. But that is the bare minimum we should be expecting. We can make every school desirable to different students and families for different reasons, but still have them all be good schools. Thematic learning is a wonderful way to create a community instead of just a school. But you can't introduce it later. It needs to be done with purpose and in a way that makes sure everyone has access. Any child who wants to be an engineer or an electrician should be able to attend a school where they can explore those interests, just as any child who wants to be an artist or a world traveler should. Our youngest children have the most potential and the most open minds. Why close them, by forcing our kids into a mold they don't fit in based on where their house is? Dr. Walters, at the Student Voice Conference, said, "It's not right when the opportunities available to students are dictated by their zip codes." But that's exactly what the facilities utilization plan will do at the K-5 level if our students and families don't get any choice. One last radical idea for you before my time is out: If you insist on starting this school closure process based on the current plan to make a plan, put every school in the district on the list. Then we can sit down and have a real conversation based on current and accurate data about why we're closing some schools and leaving others open.
Thank you for your testimony. And next is Dylan Childs.
Push the button.
Hi, we're Dylan and Jordan Childs, and we're fifth graders at Woolslayer Elementary. We don't like the idea of closing Woolslayer, but if you have to, it would make sense to move the STEAM curriculum to another school. Having the STEAM program at our school has been great. Not every school should have a STEAM program, but having a theme really makes us feel like a community. We feel like every elementary school would be better if it had a theme that the students could love. Having a theme at our school means kindergartners through fifth graders can converse with any other student about the coding and robots they've used. It gives us something in common with each other. In English class, we can use a modified version of the engineering process to improve our writing assignments. We can have two STEAM clubs after school with three teachers that do not include the STEAM teacher, one for K through 2 and another for 3 through 5. Starting in kindergarten, every student in our school learns the engineering process. We think Dr. Walters should come learn it, too. If he did, he'd know that after you make your first plan, you and your colleagues find the problems in it and redesign it. A plan that is missing 72 classrooms and has a big blank box for part of its feeder school pattern needs to be redesigned before it's ready to use. That's all. Goodbye.
Jean, you should pay attention when the kids talk.
Thank you. And next, we will have Abby Fowles.
Hi, my name is Abby Fowles. I live in Elliott in the West End. I have two children at Phillips Spanish Magnet on the South Side. I live in my childhood home in Elliott, and I attended PPS for all of my schooling, Schaefer, Westside, Frick, and Shenley, all magnet schools. I got a great education. In fact, I think being in the International Studies Magnet Program helped lead me to earn a PhD in geography. I'm speaking today because if the current proposed plan goes through, I will be pushed to remove my kids from PPS, and this would break my heart. The plan to eliminate elementary magnets would take away my school options. Magnet schools are vilified, but for those of us living in the poorer areas of the city like Elliott, they're the only PPS option that I can send my kids to in good faith. It is crucial to have several school options. I have always been proud to be a part of a PPS family, but this plan would make me and many, many others leave the district. Magnet schools offer kids who live in the areas with concentrated poverty an opportunity to escape their neighborhood schools if they are not the best fit for them. Let me be clear, neighborhood schools can be great, but they may not be for everyone. We live in a city, and we should be able to offer our children different school options to best fit their interests and needs. Although my family never moved from my health in Elliott, my one brother went to nine different schools, most of them PPF, before he was able to find a school that he could successfully graduate from. What would have happened to him today if he had had fewer options? Pittsburgh is small. I consider the whole city to be my neighborhood. It's easy to romanticize the notion of community as your neighborhood. But for a lot of people, especially in areas of concentrated poverty, local neighborhoods can be cages if they're trying to escape, or more likely, they have complicated feelings about them. They can be stifling, but also wonderful. But it's important not to romanticize the notion that physical proximity equals a lovely community, especially if it's one filled with violence and low expectations. Community can exist across the city, and it's not that big of a city. Pittsburgh is extremely segregated by race and class. Without magnet schools, the city schools will become more segregated, and those that live in wealthier neighborhoods will benefit, and those that live in poorer neighborhoods will literally be ghettoized. This proposed plan will create more segregated schools. Until I see a clear plan with a budget laid out and feeder lines drawn, I don't believe that the poorest areas will benefit, because they almost never are, whatever the intentions. And right now, there is no clearly outlined plan. I have almost no faith that my neighborhood school of Langley will suddenly get a Spanish program, when I know that right now, second graders there don't even have laptops to take home. We can all agree that schools can be better, and we need some change. But this plan will basically be akin to redlining parts of the city. It will set kids living in areas of concentrated poverty like Elliott in the West End for failure. They say that a child's zip code determines their destinies, and this plan will make that happen. Please reconsider the proposed plan. Families need to have more than one school option. Limiting school choice options will make people leave PPS faster than they already are, and we need to ensure that...
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker is Erica Gidley.
Good evening. My name is Erica Gidley, and I'm a parent and community member at Arsenal pre-K through 5. I asked my second-grade daughter if she had anything to say to the people who were in charge of all the schools, and she said that she is the best principal. So just shout out to Dr. Ray. I didn't prompt anything. My concerns are that there is kind of a lack of sharing information on finances, whether it be for the feasibility studies, whether it be for general operating costs. I know all the information is there, for the most part, for the operating costs. Like, I can dig through and see things, but I have to dig. So that makes me hesitant to believe that we have all the information or that all the information is being shared about the facilities utilization plan before the vote is put to place. Like, everyone in this room knows public education is not free. There are costs involved. But many Pittsburgh residents may not fully understand the reasons behind the higher costs associated with our education system, particularly why our budget per student is significantly above the national average. The general public needs to understand that PPS is doing the work required to meet state and federal regulations and the very valid reasons the cost per student is higher. Some very general examples: PPS is required to take any child, regardless of background, disability, or language barrier, and provide them with a quality education, which is why places like Conroy and the Student Achievement Center should stay open. We have a higher IEP percentage than most similarly sized cities, and that increased the cost per student. Charters and private schools can deny students due to cost restrictions, and PPS cannot. I did find that bullet point buried under a 2003, I don't know the name of the study off the top of my head, on page like 32. I just feel like these are things that should be brought to the attention more, because they are a real barrier that this district faces. And there's a lot of funding regulations that are just not on our side. Why isn't there more conversation about the why of any budget or financial statement to help potential families and the public understand the significant barriers PPS faces? These concerns take me to my next point. We need more transparent operating budget numbers to understand any savings touted regarding the facilities utilization plan. Because the district is so opaque about the operating budget and why things are the way they are, I want to trust the public, and more importantly, the board, have all the information necessary to move the process forward. After four months of buildup between ERS's final presentation and Dr. Wal-
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker is Valerie Webb Alman.
Once again, I need to start with a lack of virtual testimony and concerns over some changes to the policy. First, I'm deeply concerned that the virtual testimonies were not returned before the vote to start the school closures process. This is problematic. You are well aware that we need the public to be heard for this, and you should have prioritized bringing that back before voting on a school closure process. So why... There's some questions I have also. Why would the resolution be brought first? That's number one. If someone needs to change from in-person to virtual or vice versa, are they going to be allowed to do that? If you aren't available to testify when you're called, are you going to be called at the end and able to do that? And why aren't you expanding access to people who show up to testify but didn't know or weren't able to sign up in advance? weren't able to sign up in advance? Those are all questions that I think should be answered. Now, as for the resolution to start the school closures process, after seeing the data and presentation, we were given even less information without timeline or other vital info that-- and ERS told us that this plan wasn't feasible without the information from a demographer and other sources, so I don't know how it all of a sudden became feasible. Dr. Walters did what my kids do sometimes, so, like, I'll tell them to clean their rooms, and they don't finish the job. They shove the stuff that they don't want to clean in their closets, and then they show me a clean room and said they did the job. Well, then I open the door, and the mess is still there, and sometimes it's worse than it was originally, so you guys have the obligation to check his closet before greenlighting any plans to go outside and play, okay? So, some major concerns revolving around the demographer, and that must be completed before we choose which schools to close. We need to know that before we know which ones to expand or even reopen. Theater patterns and attendance zones are deeply impactful district-wide when closing these 10 schools. If you look at it, the numbers don't make sense. We don't have enough dedicated classrooms for this work--to work, even if we pack every remaining school to 100% capacity. This not only leads us to eliminate the spaces for dedicated learning, certain special education services, any community schools programs, gifted music, art, thematic learning, et cetera, but it also eliminates the options for families to return to the district. It restricts our ability to grow, and it sets up all students, but especially the most vulnerable, for failure. Passing this will start a domino effect that is far more complicated than what Mr. Walker has been saying. I know, because I've seen it. Get the necessary info from the demographer and then figure out what makes sense for the upcoming footprint, the new footprint. Leading with this plan and then trying to force the data to fit never works, so don't put the cart before the horse. Furthermore, what teacher or parent would choose this? Just because you eliminate choices through PPS--
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you. We have to move forward. Thank you for your testimony. And next, we will have Lilly Alman.
My name is Lilly Alman. Thank you for this opportunity to speak, even though it still isn't virtual. Please fix that. I once saw a quote that said, "We mature by damage and not by age." This process is making me far more mature than I need to be at 11 years old. That is not a compliment. Dr. Walters, a couple weeks ago, you told students to use their voices. You claimed that students' voices are first always, but whenever we have tried to use them, you don't listen to us. You claim to be the one that is lifting up student voices, yet students have been fighting to have our voices heard for years. My peers and I have begged you to talk to us, but you still haven't. I think it's time for you to stop gaslighting us and claiming that you've been the one elevating our voices, when it has been us that has been elevating our own voices this entire time. The only thing I've learned from Dr. Walters's information is that if you close those 10 schools, we are short at least 76 classrooms district-wide. If you don't reopen Northview, you'll be short at least 100 classrooms. What do you plan to do with us? There's going to be 100 classrooms worth of kids that you don't have a plan for, but you're still saying that closing all those schools is feasible. Even if you manage to Tetris us around to fill extra rooms in the other schools, we are still between 3 to 27 classrooms, short with all schools at 100% capacity. Let's not ignore how bad it is to cram all of our schools to 100% or more capacity either. You will not have room for us, much less all the classes you claim we will have access to or for any new students. On October 21st, I asked several questions that we needed to know from Dr. Walters. Unfortunately, Dr. Walters gave us even less information than ERS did, so I still have all those questions. Is this closure plan really feasible, or are you just sacrificing our education to make change for change's sake? I don't have time to ask all those questions now, but we deserve answers to all of them. I listed them in my written testimony, if you want to see them. To vote to start any school closure would be reckless, because we need the information from the demographer to see if these building closures really make sense. If you wanted to vote on this now, you should have hired the demographer in November, like ERS told you to. Voting to start the closure process without all this information is like driving blindfolded. Can you do it? Sure, but it isn't safe, and I don't want to be anywhere near you when you do it. Vote no on starting school closures until you can see the roads clearly. Just some advice from an 11-year-old that's only driven a golf cart and a side-by-side. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And next is Anne Ferris.
Hi, I'm Anne Ferris, a Northside parent with a third grader at Delworth. I want to echo Ms. Petrowski's concern from last week at the Agenda Review that, as stewards of the school district and taxpayer dollars, I think it's irresponsible that the board would be voting on this item this month without any new information on the fiscal impact on the district. We are being asked to vote--meaning all of you-- without any kind of estimated timeline of when and how long improvements will take or when schools would actually be scheduled to close. The district's priorities around excellence are extraordinarily unclear. I am here to sound the alarm. Passing this resolution to open up the public commentary on the closures of these 10 schools signals work on the superintendent's incomplete facilities utilization plan has begun. There are, of course, an infinite amount of theoreticals, but the fact is, the clock will have started on scheduling the vote or votes to close each of these 10 schools. Last week, at the Agenda Review, Mr. Walker said, "We need to put ourselves in a position to be able to act, when the time is right, on any and all school closures. To delay the authorization of public hearings puts us in a position where, when we want to, based off whatever timeline is presented by the superintendent, we're not able to do that in a timely fashion, which delays our ability to implement the plan, to impact student outcomes, and to give our parents and families the appropriate runway to get ready for the changes." Public hearings can be scheduled 15 days after the vote. Knowing that the board may vote at any time to close these 10 schools, but that they might not, will result in giving students and families less time to transition unless they assume now these 10 schools are closing. This is the message that I hear. Board directors, I urge you to vote no on Resolution 1703 and not open up the process for public commentary on any school closures until the superintendent provides the following information. Thank you, Ms. Yord. The demographer report, complete feeder patterns, budgets related to the transportation costs, estimated cost savings or cost increases for the school closures, continued maintenance costs for the closed schools, additional capital costs for school renovations, how we will resource ELL disposition plans for old schools, and how the closures enable the district to continue to invest and expand community schools programs. Mr. Walker, if you do not feel comfortable putting this planning in the hands of the next five board members who will be sworn in in December, this shows a tremendous lack of confidence in the plan in its current state. Yes, we can do hard things. Yes, children are resilient. The people who are showing up here on the PPS Facebook comment thread in your inboxes are showing concerns for the students of our district. It is not selfish, as Dr. Walters has said publicly--
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker is Mark Weaver.
I speak tonight with the knowledge that I have a relatively unpopular position, because I feel like the facilities utilization plan can be beneficial for the school district. I have a couple reasons for thinking this way, and also some concerns I want to share, and that some others have shared, too. Before I start, as a father of a young son with autism, I just wanted to mention that I've been really moved by the comments of students, family, and staff at Conroy. I want to mention that before starting and thanking them for sharing their stories and sharing their lives with us. First, why some parts of the facilities utilization plan? The current system is far too complicated with too many different types of schools. I think it makes a lot of sense to have the structure into elementary, middle, and high schools, K-5, 6-8, and 9-12. I also think that the district became over-reliant on Magnet schools at the elementary level in order to compete with charter schools. Under a single block on my street, students attend five different PPS elementary schools, and that really just doesn't make that much sense to me. Now, I know a lot of people disagree, but I think that keeping neighborhood schools makes a whole lot more sense for the city and communities, especially at the elementary level. Maybe at the middle and high school levels, it makes a lot of sense to have those different programs, but at the elementary level, you end up with students being lucky to win a lottery to get to a school with better facilities and more resources. Why not provide great opportunities for all of our elementary students? Surely, we can distribute funds and resource students in matter of zip code and not have a Magnet system, where some students get lucky and others feel like they might get stuck. I also believe it's important for the district to be closing some of the facilities that are no longer needed because of declining enrollment and aging population. It's never going to be easy to choose to close schools. I believe it's your job to figure out what to do, whether it's the original ERS plan, the updated plan that was rolled out, or even the parent proposal that many here support and is affiliated with 412 Justice. Some buildings are going to need to be closed. We've heard from a lot of parents tonight from Wolseley, which sounds like a really good school. The 412 Justice Plan also proposes to close Wolseley. So, like, regardless, we're going to have to have some difficult choices to be made, and I don't really envy you and your position, and you have to listen to a lot of people who are going to be upset and be unhappy, but that's a difficult part about being a public servant, I guess. I do agree with a lot of other parents that we need to have a little bit more information. Before the plan is voted for, we should know where the students from different neighborhoods are going to go. I think there's a lot of concerns that, like, certain areas might not have an elementary school close by, especially if we don't have as many elementary magnets, and I do think, as many people said, the demographer should have already been hired, and we should get that information. We clearly have a ton of people who are really well-informed, really passionate, really plugged in, both to the school as a whole, but especially, of course, with their own kids. So we deserve to have that information. We deserve to know, like, what's going on, and so as open and transparent as you can be, that is going to be really helpful for us, whether we support the plan, whether we're totally against it, whether we want elementary school magnets or want neighborhood schools. Like, I think more information is just going to help us all out. I also think, and I hopefully am not going to run out of time here, that we need to have a plan of what we're going to do with the facilities that are closed. In Garfield, the Fort Pitt School, I believe, is still sitting empty, and I think the district has tried to do stuff with it, and it's all really complicated and what to do--
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you. And our next speaker is Holly Munson.
First, thank you to those board members who spoke in response to the so-called feasibility report. Thank you, Devon Talafaro and Emma Yord, for clearly stating that you cannot support this plan in its current form. Thank you, Dwayne Barker, Tracy Reed, and Jamie Petrowski for asking critical questions about timeline, budget, and other missing information. Second, board members, parents are not opposed to change. We're opposed to incompetence. The superintendent has asked you to give him a green light, but he has not earned that green light. I wouldn't trust Dr. Walters to rearrange desks, much less lead a large-scale change that is going to turn neighborhoods into education deserts. Dr. Walters has created a false sense of urgency and then wasted $250,000 and a year on a sloppy plan that isn't even based on data. It's too late to change that poor planning. It's just too late, but if you, as board members, care about change and transformation, you can vote on hiring a dang demographer, so we're not disrupting thousands of lives, especially children, blindly and recklessly. Third, Superintendent Walters, hello again. In a video made by your staff, you said, "For our parents that are really challenged by change, give us the opportunity so you can see and then believe." Dr. Walters, God is a matter of faith and belief. You are not God. You're not God. You are a superintendent. You earn trust by doing your job. Your job that pays you almost $300,000 a year in taxpayer dollars. You do your job by doing the math and showing your work. Please do your job or resign. Fourth, to anyone listening, a reminder that half of the school board seats are up for reelection this May. That includes Jean Walkers. Hi again. I am personally excited to support someone else for District 9. Ali Potonic is an awesome candidate. I also support Carlos Thomas for District 1 and Mahdi Bay for District 7. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your testimony. And next, Lars Munson.
Hi, I'm Lars. I'm a sixth grader at Schiller, which somew--which someone is trying to close. A year ago, I came to speak in my first board meeting. It was a little scary, but I was proud that I did it. I even got to be in the news, which I wasn't prepared for. News flash: Please don't put me on the news again. No, now this is being streamed on YouTube. I haven't even started a YouTube channel yet, but I have lots of ideas, and someday I will. Over this past year, I've learned about politics that are really annoying, you know, that Donald Trump, but that I know it's important to use your voice to stand up for yourself and your community. I'm grateful that I went to Wolseley, and I love my current school, Schiller. I think it might even be the best three years of my life, which I don't know for sure yet. This is a picture of my homeroom class, well, most of it, in 60E. I like my class, my teachers, and my school. Some of my favorite classes are STEAM, art, music, and last but certainly not least, math. I hope you can do the right thing. Please make a plan that doesn't close schools and doesn't hurt kids. Also, please bring back the Zoom so I don't need to be here. We need a hand that helps kids like myself and my friends. Thank you. Okay, I'm good now.
Thank you for your testimony. And next, we'll have Kathleen McGlady.
Good evening. I'm a first-grade teacher at Pittsburgh Wolseley. I'm a proud product of Pittsburgh Public Schools. I either teach or have taught. Many of the young people have come to speak here tonight. I want to express my deep concern about the lack of planning for the proposed facilities utilization plan. I urge you to vote against beginning the process to close any schools. But first, I want to express my outrage at the characterization of the parents, students, and community members who've been attending these hearings. They are anything but selfish. If they are loud and repetitive, it's because you are not listening. Parent and community members worked hard to submit their ideas for an alternative plan, and it was ignored. Students come here every month to speak, and they are not acknowledged. The families of our elementary students in particular want options, and if the district does not provide that opportunity, they will go elsewhere. Aside from a survey filled with leading questions to support your own ideas, as far as I know, no teachers have been asked for their input about this plan. Dr. Walters has expressed his desire to be innovative, but the details are lacking. Teachers use innovation daily: working, researching, planning, forming relationships, doing all that we can to meet the needs of our students and providing opportunities for them to thrive. Have you asked any teachers what our ideas are for the future of our district, or do you assume that we are all selfish, too? Remember that we, along with students, are the ones who will deal with the aftermath of your decisions every day. The consequences of this plan for elementary students are being overlooked. For example, Sunnyside will be in an estimated 93% capacity under this plan, but according to your own data, Wolseley is around 72% capacity, but art and music are on a cart. The speech therapist is in a converted closet. There is no designated space for a therapist, occupational therapist, ELL teacher, or other service providers. There is a shortage of classroom space under this proposal. What opportunities will our elementary students lose under this plan? Will all elementary schools have a foreign language teacher or a STEAM teacher, or the opportunities that are now available through our Magnet programs? Will our class sizes become so large that we cannot give our students the attention they need and deserve for the sake of cutting costs? Will the teaching and learning environment be safe and conducive to learning? Will it include supports to help our most vulnerable children, such as--
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker, Alana Mitchell. We'll move to the next speaker, Jordan Williams.
My name is Jordan Williams, and I have a 13-year-old son that has attended Conroy for the past seven years. He is currently participating in the CAD program. That's the Center for Autism and Developmental Disorders program at Conroy, which is a partnership between UPMC and PPS. I am back for the third time this school year to urge this administration and the board to reconsider the recommendation to move Conroy students to Southbrook. It's been said that Southbrook has amenities that the Conroy community isn't aware of. To me, a sensory garden and sensory pool are nice to haves, but not must haves, whereas bathroom dignity, for example, is an absolute must. Families are not simply fondly attached to the Conroy building-- Families are not simply fondly attached to the Conroy building or the building location. We know that our teachers and staff are a huge part of our students' success and that some aspects of the Conroy community can be replicated elsewhere. However, the building on its own plays an integral role in student outcomes. It's been said countless times that the administration believes ERS's suggestion to move Conroy to Southbrook is feasible, but it's not been specified to the public how it is feasible. Perhaps, if we have more information, we could support the proposal to shift Conroy students to Southbrook. I think it is important to note that I and others in the Conroy community are not complaining for the sake of complaining or simply in desire of resisting new ideas and change. My son has attended the extended school year program at Southbrook over the past two summers, so we've had the chance to see firsthand some of the issues that the building presents. I've also had the chance to speak to staff members that have been able to share their perspective, having worked in both buildings. Honestly, without their input, I wouldn't even know the significance of a proposal such as this one, a transparency issue, which I will not get into here. All of this is to say that the Conroy community needs more information. None of our concerns about the specifics of what the current Conroy building and setting allow, that Southbrook building and setting do not allow, have been addressed. Will each classroom have a dedicated bathroom to allow bathroom dignity for the high population of students that need support in the bathroom? Without this accommodation, the reality is that there will be an increase in accidents that lead to learning loss and unsafe and unethical situations for everyone involved. What of Conroy's award-winning athletics program that would now not have access to adequate spaces? Special needs kids and young adults are already significantly marginalized in this society. For example, my son has very few opportunities to engage in extracurriculars because most programs do not have the resources to support high-needs kids. If they do exist, they have wait lists or they require a parent to assist the child. The athletic programs at Conroy are some of the only opportunities that our kids have to equitably participate in sports. How can we justify reducing access to these opportunities when these students already have less than their neurotypical peers? Activities of daily learning, will there be ADL spaces that are essential to intellectually-disabled students' future success and independence? Community-based instruction? Career preparation spaces? How will students' IEPs be met without realistic and adequate access to a local community that supports CBI? The CAD program, which my son is a part of, I was deeply dismayed to have just learned that the CAD program is not slated to continue at Southbrook. This program is...
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker is Rachel Milleron.
I'd like to read a couple of student letters. Dear Board President, Board Members, and Superintendent Walters, my home school is Westinghouse Academy. I am attending the Student Achievement Center in the Middle School Overage Program. I came to SAC because in the fifth grade, I wasn't going to school because one of my family members died, and I wasn't able to attend school for a while because of that. This caused me not to be in the right grade for my age. Since I have been at SAC, my grades have gotten better, and I am better able to understand the classwork that I am given. The class sizes are smaller at SAC, so the teachers are able to help me more. My attendance has also improved since I've been here at SAC, and I'm coming to school earlier than I was at Westinghouse. I've been involved in less drama, and I have better relationships with my teacher here at SAC. SAC is closer to my house, too. I am a part of a weekly girls' group here that teaches me to control my anger. The program has been very helpful to me, and I have not been able to, I might not have been able to be a part of a program like that at my home school. SAC offers many opportunities for students to be successful by catching up to their right grade and graduating. Without SAC, I would still be 14 in the seventh grade and behind. SAC has helped me get caught up, and for that, I'm very grateful. I can't wait to go to the ninth grade next year. Please reconsider keeping the overage middle school program open so other kids like me can also be successful. This program has been terminated for the '25-'26 school year. Dear Board Members and Superintendent Walters, my seven months at SAC have been very eventful and stressful, but with the help from my teachers and the staff, they took the stress away. Ever since I've been here, my grades went up and less drama. My first day here, I cried, but my teachers and staff welcomed me and showed love. I used to never want to go to school, but ever since SAC, I've been coming to school every day and on time. This school has helped me in so many ways. I've learned how to file taxes. I've learned so much in forensic science, I love that class. I learned how to write poems. Every teacher is amazing, and they treat us like we're their own kid. I actually love the school and the environment that I'm in while I'm here. I've also made up all of my credits in the seven months, and this is the only school where you have the chance to make up your credits and graduate on time. My overall time here was the best, and I hate to see the school being shut down. As you process information regarding the Student Achievement Center, please consider our students. Our students are some of the most vulnerable, the most challenged, and often forgotten. They are the ones who fall behind, fall between the cracks, and fall behind their peers. SAC is the place where they can get back on track. We serve a small portion of the students enrolled, but our students deserve to be seen, deserve to be supported.
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker is Reagan Koneski.
Good evening. My name is Reagan Koneski, and I serve as the school nurse at Pittsburgh Conroy. Last month, I addressed the public hearing to highlight several reasons why Conroy should remain at 1398 Page Street. This evening, I would like to focus specifically on another crucial reason, the Conroy CAD program. During a recent parent meeting a couple weeks ago, families were informed that if voted upon, the entire Conroy program would relocate to the Southbrook site, except for the potential exclusion of the CAD program. CAD, which stands for Center for Autism and Developmental Disorders, is a longstanding collaborative initiative between Western Psych Hospital of UPMC and Pittsburgh Public Schools. For the past 30 years, this program has operated within Conroy, providing critical services to students with significant behavioral health needs. The Conroy CAD Intensive Behavioral Health Service consists of two classroom spaces accommodating six students in each room. These students are supported by a multidisciplinary team, including a Conroy special education teacher, two Conroy paraprofessionals, four UPMC mental health clinicians, one mental health therapist, a program director, and one amazing psychiatrist, Dr. DeLope. The mission of the program is to deliver treatment that reduces or eliminates behaviors impeding a student's ability to reach their full potential. CAD serves as a vital resource for students at risk of inpatient psychiatric hospitalization by providing intensive in-school interventions. It also supports students who might otherwise require placement in a more restrictive academic setting, such as an APS program, due to acute behavioral concerns. Most students enrolled in the CAD program are already part of Conroy's existing student population. Allowing them to transition within the same school rather than relocating to an unfamiliar environment ensures continuity of care, minimizes disruption, and maintains their access to familiar staff and school-wide activities. Beyond the intensive behavioral program, CAD now offers psychiatric outpatient services to Conroy students. Initially introduced as a pilot program last school year, it has since evolved into a fully operational service. Previously, families had to take their children to CAD's south side office or have them miss school for virtual appointments, leading to frequent cancellations and treatment gaps. Since integrating outpatient services within Conroy during the school day, we have only had one missed appointment since September. That is remarkable. To provide a sense of the program's impact, there are 12 students currently enrolled in the intensive behavioral program. There is always a wait list for this program. Forty students receive outpatient psychiatric care at school through CAD. I administer 46 daily meds to students that are treated by the CAD provider alone. Referrals are ongoing, with four new referrals submitted in just the past two weeks for the outpatient care. The demand for mental health services is rising, particularly among Conroy's student population. Families in need of psychiatric care often face six-to-10-month wait times before securing an appointment, an unacceptable delay. Through our partnership with CAD, students and fam-
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker is Joshua Zalesnik.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Joshua Zalesnik, and I'm the librarian and PFT building rep at the Student Achievement Center. I just want to make sure the board knows how essential a school like SAC is for Pittsburgh Public Schools. My school helps some of the most vulnerable kids in middle school and high school stay on course and graduate. Almost 100% of the students in the school are people of color. Some students have failed, some or almost all of their middle school and high school courses. Most of these students failed not because they're not bright, but because of truancy, which we know can happen for multiple reasons. Some students have been dealing with trauma, some have ADHD and are other mental health issues. Some were set back, some were set back by the online COVID years. Some may lack an inspiring role model that can convince them how important school is. Many times, students who come to SAC find this inspiring person in a teacher or staff person at the school who helps them believe in themselves and put the work in to graduate and move on to the next level. I've mentored students who work so hard on their edinuity courses that they've completed 10 or more in a semester. The teachers and staff at SAC are a special group. We get to know our students and create bonds with them. One of the reasons we can do this is because the class sizes are smaller than other PPS schools, and this is essential in order to best educate the students who would other schools could get left behind. Just having a program like Period 10 is not enough for many of the kids in the district that have double-digit credits to make up. Plus, it is often a very good thing to separate these students from their peers at their home schools, because many times, it is exactly their friends who are distracting them, I say friends in quotes, and holding them back from flourishing. Many students who come to SAC initially hate being separated from their friends at their home school, but they adjust, make new friends or new old friends, and they don't care anymore about the urge to leave because they know the shift was necessary for them to get their schoolwork done. And they find that they actually like it at SAC. In fact, when students come to SAC, they often want to, they want to stay even after they are given the green light to return back to their home schools. What happens to these students if a school like the Student Achievement Center closes? Is this equitable? Will these students get left behind? We know enrollment would be higher if school buses were provided for students at our school. We encourage an analysis of SAC enrollment data from when we had school buses compared to when we lost school buses. Also, when you look at the data across the district right now, many more students should be signed up to attend SAC instead of their home schools. Current district data for just the ninth grade excluding CAPA and SciTech show that seven students have failed 13 classes, 15 have failed eight, 17 have failed six, and these students could be at SAC making up these classes. Is Period 10 enough for these stu-
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker is Noel Webb.
Hello. First off, I want to say to Mark Weaver, 412 Justice has nothing to do with school closures. Please get your facts straight before you speak on us. Second of all, I speak not just as a member of 412 Justice, but as a proud parent of four adult children and nine grandchildren, most of whom reside in Pittsburgh and attend Pittsburgh Public Schools. Urgent, closing community schools without a solid plan will have a devastating impact on our children. On March 26, the board will vote to begin the irreversible process of permanently closing 10 PPS school buildings. The urgency of this decision is paramount. It is urgent that the Pittsburgh School Board votes against the unaccountable, non-transparent resolution to permanently close 10 school buildings. The board and the public have been left uninformed, lacking the essential information necessary to make educated decisions regarding school closures. This absence of transparency is troubling and needs to be addressed. The board should vote no on initiating the building closure process because there is no plan. The ERS plan presented in October of 2024 is not feasible due to incomplete feeder patterns, and students will not fit into the schools to which they would be assigned. ERS recommended that a demographer be hired immediately to determine the following: feeder patterns and attendance zones for proposed changes; transportation plans for students; analysis of the impact on staffing for teachers, paraprofessionals, and school staff; projected savings cost analysis of closures. The school board must demand the following: the immediate hiring of a demographer; a timeline for building closures, school closures, and school reconfigurations; investment guarantees to enhance services and programs as promised; an equity analysis of students who will be compelled to move to another school; a plan for vacant closed buildings. These school closures will lead to exacerbated inequities that harm our most vulnerable students. Larger class sizes; longer travel times for students; layoffs of teachers, paraprofessionals, and other staff; decreased test scores for students; increased seclusion and segregation of students with disabilities and English language learners. Not but lastly, not last but least, gentrification of our neighborhoods. No more empty promises. For the past year, we have informed PPS leadership that we need more than empty promises for the future of our students, families, staff, and communities. It's clear that some board members agree and have requested vital information. Instead of providing the necessary information, Dr. Walters publicly dismissed adults who raised concerns about the FU plan. We are being asked to trust PPS leaders with the future of the district.
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker is Monica Johnson. Again, Monica Johnson. We'll move to the next speaker, Cara Britannic.
Hi, my name is Cara Britannic, and I'm the mom of this kindergartner. I want to start by thanking Ms. Yord and Ms. Talafaro for their comments during last week's agenda review meeting and demanding the data that we've been requesting for months. More information is needed before these important decisions can be made. Real savings and improvements can only come if leaders have an actual plan to reallocate resources. Simply closing buildings will not yield the improvements you're promising us. I'm frustrated because I feel unheard. Mr. Walker, you claim that only people that disagree with you come out and speak, but if you'd actually been listening to many of us for all these months, you would know that we largely agree that things need to change. While I understand that listening to us does not obligate you to do what we ask, we haven't been asking for much. Time and time again, we've asked for more information, more clarity, and more of a plan so that we can get behind you. Your decision to ignore us feels dismissive, further breeds mistrust, and prompts us to be louder, because maybe, just maybe, it'll get through to you the next time. Actions speak louder than words, and right now, your actions are telling me that you're going to do what you want to do regardless of our requests and feedback. This was evident in the building analysis data that was shared recently. The schools that are on the chopping block for closure have incomplete data. Were walk-throughs actually done, and you just didn't bother to visit those 10 schools because you've already decided to close them? The lack of transparency feeds the distrust, and the missing data on these 10 buildings furthers the idea that these schools are already being closed no matter what the data suggests. Dr. Walters, in your recent opinion article in the Post-Gazette, you said you collected just over 6,000 data points during this process. Diving a little deeper into the numbers, if we just count students, guardians, teachers, and staff, we have about 39,000 stakeholders that will be directly affected. This is such a small sample, accounting for only 15% of your stakeholders, which is a generous estimate since I didn't include the broader community. Is that acceptable? You also wrote that the feasibility report affirmed the potential impact these recommendations will have in reaching our priorities of equity, excellence, and efficiency. Did I miss that part of the presentation? I thought you weren't tasked with that, that this report was purely about feasibility, because all I saw was your staff confirming that kids could fit in a building despite your building analysis data showing some schools don't have enough rooms. There is no financial feasibility or busing or staffing feasibility. Is that in the works? We want to trust you, but trust requires a transparent plan. Show us how you will protect each school and allocate resources fairly. Show us how this plan leads to better outcomes. What are the financial implications of closing and maintaining buildings? Show us the attendance zones and feeder patterns and what enrollment numbers are estimated to be. Will students even fit in the remaining schools when attendance zones are redrawn? How can we be expected to provide meaningful feedback when we don't have all the pertinent information? So I'm asking again, please provide us with all the data we've been asking for before making any decisions. If that means voting no on opening the public hearing process, great. If that means voting yes, but with the agreement that no hearings are held until more days available, I can get on board with that. But what I can't get behind is this administration and this board continuing to move full seam ahead without any semblance of a plan or data to back it up.
Thank you for your testimony. And now we'll have Charlie Britannic.
Hi, my name is Charlie Britannic, and I'm a student at Pittsburgh Monastory. I'm here tonight to fight against moving my school, because if you move my school, I wouldn't like it. My school has a lot of green space, so I can run around it. I also really like the playground and playing there with my friends during recess and after school. We are, oh, no wait, we also have a garden where we have gar- garages. And also, if you move Monastory, cars and buses need to use gas that can cause air pollution. Either both gas and electric cars. Either both cars and electric cars and buses, and they run out of electricity, they will need to use gas, and it can, can, yeah, also can cause air pollution. Monastory is close to my house, and if you move it, I will need to drive forward, and that's about it. So don't leave my school or else.
Thank you for your testimony. Now we will take a break, and I will put this in the hands of Mr. Walker for further directions.
Thank you. It is about 8:14, so let's reconvene at 8:25 and get started with the next group.
Good evening. First, a comment on the Board governance model change. My experience with governance models comes from the realm of community and neighborhood development corporations. The cautionary tale is often situations where there was a community plan, even a plan with significant resident participation, and as the executive went on to implement that plan, if the Board sought to distance itself too much from the actual implementation work, the residents found themselves distanced as well, from the original intent also. So the less that you, the Board, are involved, the less that we will be involved, because we won't be seeing things discussed at your meetings necessarily. Some things are going to move behind closed doors. On the broader topic, I watched the February staff presentation on the feasibility of the ERS plan. What struck me most during that presentation was the number of schools where building capacity in terms of pupil seats filled, as you calculate it, it would actually decrease pretty significantly under the recommendations at some of those schools. I counted at least seven as the staff went through each slide for each school. Some of the most notable were Westinghouse from 45% to 28%, and Arsenal from 42% to 20%, Dilworth from 86% to 48%. SciTech was the only one in that group where a decrease in capacity might be reasonable, given that it's, at present, it's 99%. But for the other schools, as a parent, those numbers sound a little scary to me, that capacity would go so low under the proposal because one of our original premises, or the district's premises the whole time, has been that significantly under-capacity schools are a liability to us. So my fear is that you're just setting up some additional schools in the future for potential closure in another future round of this. I hope not, but this could be especially risky if your projections of who's going to remain pupils in the district with PPS might be over-optimistic based on people leaving. On the other hand, a red flag is certain schools would go way up in capacity, and look at that closely, especially for Arsenal.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Joanna Taylor.
Hello, thank you for being here, everyone, Board and other leadership. I'm the mayor of Mount Oliver, Joanna Taylor. I'm also a PAC parent, PTO officer, and just regular old parent at Arlington. I'm going to switch gears a little bit with my comment tonight. I'm a parent sending my kids to my neighborhood school because it's in my neighborhood, and because if it isn't good enough for my kid, it isn't good enough for any kid. And I'm here to speak up and work with you to make sure that our school is good enough for every kid. And if others want to comment reasons not to close their schools, I support you, and I think that's great, but with all due respect, please don't use our quote "poor" or "black" neighborhood schools as pawns in your reasons for why changes shouldn't be made, and with all due respect, you can keep our neighborhoods out of your mouth. We can speak for ourselves, and I am here to speak for ourselves. So again, you all have some good points, but please do not speak for us. My story is their story. It's every story who's a neighborhood school. The story of the neighborhood schools, in one way or another, it's all very similar. Pittsburgh Public Schools' motto is "Students First, Always, In All Ways." It's not happening at Arlington K-8. Arlington's been categorized as a community school. I know that all the schools at PPS have needs in one way or another, but only a few match the extreme needs of the students at Arlington. Where is the equity for Arlington students? To keep it short, I won't spend time on the consistent lack of teachers, fighting to get a counselor, being threatened to not have a vice principal next year based on student enrollment, minimal support staff, unsafe routes to school, no crossing guards, a student was struck at our five-way intersection a couple weeks ago, all things that you need to provide if you say you have a school. We attend our neighborhood school, and no matter how many students attend that school, it's a school that we're told we can attend. If you have a school there, you have to supply the basic amount of staff to make it run, and that absolutely includes things like a vice principal and a counselor, among other things. Where is the equity for Arlington students? But tonight, I'll share one example. There were two second-grade teachers to start our year, one left on a medical leave, came back for a short time, then left permanently. The students in that class were put into other classes in grades K-1 and 3. A long-term sub was secured in end of January, beginning of February, but after a few weeks, they were moved to fill a gym vacancy. That second-grade class was no more, and the students were again spread into grades 1, K, and 3. They were not given any second-grade curriculum material to access at all. IEPs were not being met, parents were not informed even once the entire school year during any moment in this process, and it's currently still the case at our school right now. I've met with our principal, and she has met with parents since we've requested it. She apologized where she fell short and made errors with her communications to us.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Stephanie Montgomery. Again, Stephanie Montgomery. Our next speaker is Trinia Strong. Trinia Strong. Our next speaker is Tekeva Ferguson. Tekeva Ferguson. Our next speaker, Taryn Alford. Taryn Alford. Our next speaker, James Fogarty. James Fogarty. Our next speaker, Cory Thompson. Cory Thompson. Our next speaker, Sharina Johnson. Sharina Johnson. Our next speaker, Dennis Boyce.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dennis Boyce, Alternative Education Assistant through the Pittsburgh Public Schools. This is year 31 in alternative education for me, so I come with a lot of experience and a heavy heart to hear that they're possibly closing our school. One of the things that, you know, I wanted to drive home is that, one, I'm not here speaking on my behalf in regards to my job, you know, I'm closer to retirement, and my speaking here tonight is strictly for the kids, not for anyone else that may be bumped in their position, and so on and so forth. We have, Pittsburgh Public Schools can be proud of the fact that alternative education, whether it was at Ridge Avenue where I started at, all the way to Letty on the Hill, and then we transitioned to the Student Achievement Center in Homewood, we have been the catalyst to catching those students who fell through the cracks. We've been the catalyst of helping kids get back on track academically and helping to not add to that dropout rate that you all are so concerned about throughout our district. Closing Student Achievement Center is going to be that next thing that's going to cripple this district, because you're, even though we're moving in a positive way, this is definitely going to have an effect. I heard, or I saw that when they talked about the closing of the Student Achievement Center, that they said the plan was to leave it up to the home schools, where the home schools are depending on us. When those students have fell behind, they send them over to us to try to get on track academically, to get caught up so that they can graduate on time. While at the Student Achievement Center, we have a program throughout the district even for 10th period and summer school called Ingenuity. And if that's the plan moving forward, I'm here to tell you, there's going to be a lot more students leaving this district to go get into the Job Corps and the Phase 4s and the other districts that require less credits. There's going to be a lot of students leaving this district to not move on to get that high school diploma, and this is going to increase the dropout rate in this district. All I ask you is that, if nothing else, present us with a plan. If you're planning to close a school, present us with a plan that's going to say, this is how we're going to curb this situation. And if it's Ingenuity, and that's all you have, I'm here to say, with my 31 years of experience in working in alternative education, you are making a grave mistake. I respect each and every one of you all. I know you have a tough job. I know the budget is something that is serious. I know the enrollment count is something that's serious, but what's also serious is those students that need your help, those students that need that extra chance or that opportunity to get back on track academically. I ask that you all, instead of voting on this, come up--
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker, Alice Pinchback Johnson.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to talk about excuses. Excuses are symbols of nothingness. They build bridges to nowhere. Those who use these tools are masters of nothing. As an 8th grader at Frick International Studies Academy, where Dr. Walters was my principal, this was one of the sayings we had to memorize. 25 years later, that saying is ringing loudly in my mind as we hear all the excuses for why PPS cannot serve Black children at high levels and why we should maintain the status quo. In the 1970s, Dr. Barbara A. Sizemore set out to study high-achieving Black schools in PPS, of which there were five at the time. The superintendent put up every barrier to this study. His excuse was that everyone was working hard in the schools and that this study would degenerate the morale of the district. So instead of learning from high-achieving Black schools and replicating their success in PPS, he was more worried about protecting adults. This apathy towards Black student outcomes eventually got him fired. Under his successor, Dr. Richard Wallace, we saw significant improvement in student outcomes during his 12-year tenure. The next superintendent was a traditionalist who dismantled many of Dr. Wallace's programs and resegregated the district through the creation of neighborhood-based K-8 programs, stripping PPS of the progress it made on increasing Black student achievement. Currently, there are no predominantly Black schools in PPS that can be considered high-achieving according to Dr. Sizemore's criteria. Now, in 2025, when this district is trying to move forward with reconfiguration efforts, the excuses abound. We don't have enough information. School closings are harmful. More families are going to leave if we close schools. Is the perennial position of predominantly Black schools in the bottom of both the district and the state for performance not enough to necessitate change? Is not being able to read and do math on grade level also not harmful? How about for white children? Their outcomes aren't much better here. Are schools that are falling apart and have to close for multiple days a year because there is no air conditioning, not enough to warrant closing facilities? Are we okay knowing that there are elementary schools in this district that aren't offering science, art, or music, but still wondering why SciTech and Kappa are predominantly white? Is it okay that Westinghouse didn't have a geometry teacher for much of this year? Or that they didn't have a biology teacher several years ago while the top biology teacher in the state worked down the street? I worked for PPS for five years, and I'll be the first to say that the district struggles with implementation, but I would argue that a contributing factor is fear. Fear of upsetting the status quo, fear of making white people uncomfortable, and fear of actually prioritizing Black students and families, even though we are the largest demographic in this district. If you're okay accommodating families who don't want their children in schools with Black, Brown, poor, immigrant, students with disabilities, just say that. If you want to continue allocating resources in ways that uphold racial and economic segregation, say that too. But please stop making excuses for why we shouldn't move forward with reconfiguring this district. We will no longer allow you to utilize these tools of nothingness to build bridges to nowhere on behalf--
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Lakeisha Silver. Lakeisha Silver. Our next speaker is Linda Wren. Linda Wren. Our next speaker is Cara Dempsey. Cara Dempsey. Our next speaker is Ms. Paulette Foster.
Luke 14:28. Just as one would not begin building a house without first calculating the costs involved, we cannot move forward with the FU plan without thoroughly considering its full impact. Since October the 23rd until present, this plan has become increasingly unclear and impractical. It doesn't matter if chief officers or assistant superintendents are voicing their agreement, the plan is failing to meet the needs of students and parents responsible for them. Dr. Walters, you are asking school board directors to approve a proposal that is uncertain without considering the following critical issues. Budget gaps. There is no budget for the additional investment required for programs and resources. For instance, there is no projected budget for a state-of-the-art technology, world language, mental health services, restorative practices, or gifted services at each school. Renovation costs. The Board is being asked to approve school closures, consolidations, and configurations without knowing the full cost of facility improvement. For example, Conroy, a school that provides specialized program for students with disability, has no estimate budget for renovations at Southbrook, where those students would be relocated. Lack of a timeline. Unlike the ERS plan, there is no clear timeline in place. Transportation plan. A transportation plan cannot even be created until the attendance zones are decided. Unresolved feeder patterns, for example. There is no clear feeder pattern for Westinghouse or Obama. Staffing concerns. There is no plan for appropriately staffing schools. The issues of teacher shortage, adequate teacher certification, and potential staff reduction has not been addressed. I welcome new innovative ideas that promote equity, but there is no evidence to suggest that any of these proposals are feasible at the time. And as Board of Directors, it's necessary for you all to not go behind closed doors saying you're going to do one thing to your public and then go ahead and do something different. We voted you in. We expect you to do what's necessary for the fullness of our district, not just for you to make yourself feel good. The community needs a reassurance that these closures will not harm students' outcome or disrupt the lives of our students and their families. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Dorothy Sherman.
Hello. My name is Dorothy Sherman. I am a resident in Manchester, and I'm here to request that the Board vote against the closures of our schools, especially the Conroy School. The PPS position on facilities utilization, based on findings from a Boston-based company called Education Resource Strategies, is that, quote, "The relocation greatly benefits students by utilizing-- students by utilizing an unused facility that offers a safe, accessible environment with the necessary supports to meet their needs," end quote. I disagree with these assumptions. Research conducted by the Brookings Institute in 2022 consistently shows that a neighborhood's overall well-being and localized school performance go hand in hand. With all this talk of wanting to expand Manchester and the North Side, I would think that the first step is to look inwards at the community first. 6.8% of families live below the poverty level here, and the median income of Black families is $30,000. The schools are extremely important to the well-being of the neighborhood. Data from the National Center for Education Statistics show that the pandemic erased more than two decades of progress in reading and math for nine-year-old students. The effect was most profound for students from low-income communities, exacerbating the pre-pandemic achievement gap between those students and their higher-income peers. Now, the Conroy School is in my neighborhood, and it is critical to the cohesive learning of these kids that they can attend a neighborhood school. The school provides youth and young adults with an environment where they learn academic and independent living skills and a place where they feel safe and comfortable. The neighborhood provides families a variety of amenities and things to do. We have parks, restaurants, bus routes, museums, that promote success for our staff and our students because of the community that surrounds the school. I oppose the proposed move to the Southbrook facilities. I don't see the benefit in putting kids on a bus route that doesn't exist yet across a bridge to go to a school in the suburbs where they have less access to these important resources. Closing the neighborhood schools does not support families. In fact, it makes the logistics of their children attending school more difficult. I don't see how it is good for families who now have to sit in standstill traffic to pick up or drop off their kids, or how it supports families who don't have the ability to get across town if, God forbid, something were to happen. I do not see how this supports the kids and adults who go there, who have a place they can walk to and people they know and see every day. The economic impact on families versus the money saved by the district has got to be considered. Why are you taking away valuable community support in the name of saving money, in the name of growth and development? Where are the plans? I believe that closing Manchester K-8 and closing Conroy will have a significant negative impact on Manchester. Please consider keeping these schools open to support the students, their families, and the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Muriel Fox Alim.
Good evening. My name is Muriel Fox Alim, and I am a PPS parent, community member, and former PPS teacher. About 20 years ago, PPS started down a path of district reconfiguration, which resulted in dozens of schools being closed, mainly in predominantly Black neighborhoods. While the district was left with a significantly smaller footprint, we are now spending more money on fewer students with little to no return on investment. I applaud the current administration and board for initiating this latest round of courageous, uncomfortable but necessary conversations. We have the potential to make substantial district-wide changes that will ensure all kids have access to high-quality education. As the board weighs its next steps, we urge leadership to approach this new plan, not from the perspective of how many school buildings we should close, but how our district might better serve PPS students. But first, let's address the elephant in the room. A district with nearly $900 million in general and supplemental funds is not educating its fewer than 20,000 students at high levels. Every year, the district raises public panic about a growing deficit, often to end the year with surplus funds. Let's also take an honest look at how much and on what we are spending in our most segregated schools. According to the 2024 A-plus Schools Report to the Community, PPS continues to have schools that are racially and economically segregated, with our Black and less financially-resourced students attending schools that are smaller, provide fewer opportunities for rigorous academic coursework, and have newer, less experienced educators. Our district has long accepted small pockets of success at a few schools instead of focusing on system-wide reimagining so that all of our children can access schools and empower them to excel. These pockets represent a willingness to cater to white families and families with more financial resources at the expense of Black families. As reconfiguration plans move forward, let's identify what every student in our district needs to be successful and how we get resources, not just dollars, but also academic opportunities and highly effective teachers, to the students who need them most. It's critical for us to get school right for all of our students. Every school in our district should have robust, relevant, and widespread CT offerings for all students. Every child should have access to enrichment opportunities in the areas of their interests and gifts. We should ensure that every child has access to high-quality sports and arts programming. We need state-of-the-art upgrades to our dilapidated school buildings. The last school reconfiguration led to a mass exodus of students and families from the district. With an already dwindling student population, PPS cannot afford to take another major hit. Please approach this plan with a sense of thoughtful urgency, authentically engage families and concern community members, and build an actual student--
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker, Dr. Cheryl Hall Russell. Dr. Cheryl Hall Russell. Our next speaker, Sherilyn Ready.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for being here all night and listening to all of our testimonies. I know it's a long night for you, and we do appreciate you hearing everything we have to say. I'm here to say that moving us, I'm from Conroy, from our current building, will not benefit our students. We at Conroy often ask ourselves, what sets us apart from regional rooms? Why do students who are not successful elsewhere in the district succeed at Conroy? The students come having the same teacher-to-student ratios, sometimes moving to classrooms with higher student-teacher ratios, depending on their placement and a particular support. Often, coming to Conroy means removing the support of a personal care assistant. We ask ourselves, do we have a magic wand? Do we hold all the secrets to special education? I'd like to say that that's it, because we are just that impactful as teachers, which I biasly do believe is part of the reason. But the reality is that this building, the structure, lends itself to our success. Just like there is the right sports bar or a buddy's house to cheer on the Steelers, or even the right church, temple, or chapel to worship, Conroy's building is the right place for our students. Especially the ones with the severity of needs that ours possess, because it provides the space that is required. You've heard about the bathrooms, you've heard about the kitchen, the auditorium, the location, but the size alone of our classrooms and the size of the hallways matters. Within my classroom alone, I can have students in small groups receiving one-on-one instruction as needed per their IEPs. I can have them in large groups with spacing to help avoid and deter aggressive behaviors. I have independent workstations for all eight of my students. I have a leisure area for my students to take a break, in which they practice doing so for self-regulation. Just outside my door, there is an area or nook with sensory items and a comfy chair. In the hallway, there is more space, this time with trampolines for students who might not need the calming area, but an area to move. We have a huge need for movement in my building. This space allows for skill acquisition, practice, and independence. Yes, we are special educators, but we utilize the space and areas within Conroy to aid our teaching and to give our students the ability to be as successful and independent as possible. I know that some people keep saying, I can teach anywhere. This is true. I can bring my dedication, compassion, care, and effort to any building. I'm certain that other teachers who taught my students before me did the same thing. But the difference is that I have the perfect space to do this. My students are successful in gaining independence because of what they are able to accomplish, given Conroy. No matter the renovations that are made at Southbrook, the space that we have cannot be recreated. So thank you for considering this. We do all appreciate you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Lauren Stuparitz.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Colbert, and I'm a KDA2 autistic support teacher at Conroy. The Conroy community has been told that we are the resistance to change and that the move to Southbrook would be beneficial for our students. Resistance to change is a natural instinct, and most people don't like change. But in this instance, we are not resistant to change, we're resistant to inequity. During the feasibility meeting, Conroy was mentioned to be staying in their building because of their specialized facilities. Why are Conroy's specialized facilities more important than Conroy's specialized facilities? Especially when the individuals at Conroy are at such a marginalized disadvantage and need. Southbrook does not have the specialized facilities that our students need and that the Conroy building already has. I am not just speaking in theory, but from experience. During the summer of 2023, Conroy struggled through ESY at Southbrook because the building was not equipped for our students. Here are just a few key features that Conroy's specialized facilities have that are utilized for students daily, if not several times a day. Large classrooms, where there's enough room for three small group, a whole group instructional area, sensory area for frequent movement breaks and calm-down breaks. Southbrook's classrooms are half the size of Conroy's. Bathrooms either inside the classroom or right outside the door. Southbrook's shared bathrooms with multiple classrooms, this takes away the crucial instructional time and shifts privacy and dignity from these students. Multiple, large gross motor play and sensory areas for the movement that these students need throughout the building. Southbrook has one gym. A fenced-in playground just a short walk from the front door. A fenced-in sensory garden across the street that was built in collaboration with the Manchester community. Southbrook has a sensory garden that is not fenced in, which shares a hazard for many of our students who elope, and it does not have a playground. The focal points that PSE says that students will be gaining by moving to Southbrook is a four-person therapy pool for the 196 Conroy students plus the pioneer students, which also requires a script from a physician to use. A sensory garden without a playground, and it's not fenced in, and a parking lot on the premises that if you don't show up early before school starts, you will not get a spot, and there's nowhere else to park. We have been told that they plan to make renovations to Southbrook, but those renovations have not been shared with the community and all that they entail. An architect hasn't even seen if the renovations are possible. So I stand here today, not to be resistant to change, but to advocate for my students' needs so they don't get less. They receive the equity that they need and deserve.
Thank you, Mrs. Colbert, for your testimony. I just want to confirm, Lauren Stuparitz is not here? Our next speaker, Ciara Hopkins.
Hello, all. My name is Ciara Hopkins, and I'm the sister of Jada Hopkins, and she goes to Conroy Education Center. Since a young age, I knew my sister was different, but in her own way. Being at Conroy, she found her place, her friends, and new connections. She became who she is, and that's because of Conroy. Without Conroy staying where it is, these children won't have room to grow. My sister and her friends have a place where they can run, talk, and hang out like regular children/teenagers. My sister has grown into a different person over the years. She knows her way around a kitchen, how to ride public transportation. She has a job she goes to twice a week, and that's because of Conroy. Last year, there was a grant for Conroy to get new flooring, and only half of the flooring was done. This summer, the other half was supposed to be done, but that's not happening anymore because of the move. I'm confused as to why these children can't get their new floors if it's too much to pay to get the rest of the roof completed. The roof is steadily getting fixed in sections, but you can't finish it all the way? If there was a grant for flooring, but instead of doing all the flooring, and you only fix half plus some hallways? If the roof is the main thing that needs to be fixed, then why can't you use the rest of the grant money that was used for the flooring onto the roof instead? This building is these children's home, and you guys know that's wrong to take these children away from where they feel safe.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Anita Ready.
Sorry. So we're transplants to the city, and as a future parent, disclosure would mean that we'd most likely move out of the metro. Our kids are not in PPS yet, so when I heard about the PPS closure plan around two years ago, I thought that closing our neighborhood school, Spring Hill, seemed somewhat reasonable. About six months ago, I asked a neighbor about that plan and was shocked to find out that 50% of the closures are on the North Side. What I can't reconcile is with the anecdotal evidence around me. We have a three-year-old who did not get a spot at early childhood. There is a second kinder classroom now at Spring Hill, and the neighborhood is filled with so many little kids, little babies. And most of our neighbors are octogenarian, so there are more to come. This plan lacks evidence-based planning, and it's just plain dated. I would like to think that there are other parents like us that want their kids to-- other parents like us with kids under the age of five who want their kids to grow up in socio-economically diverse neighborhoods. In the Northeast, we know that racial segregation is rampant because we have township-based school systems. We don't have county-based school systems. And in order for that to-- and the best place for-- best chance for us to have less racial segregation, less socioeconomic segregation in metros and cities like Pittsburgh. Just maybe-- and if we had that, just maybe we wouldn't be in the political situation that we're currently in. I really hope we stay in our current area, but the closure plan would make us look elsewhere. We are not private charter or religious education people. We do not believe in that. Pittsburgh is going to become a climate change refugee-- refuge, whether or not the city and the school district is prepared. And we need a plan that moves forward, not one that cuts us off at the knees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Sarah Grubb. Sarah Grubb. Our next speaker is Meredith Knight.
Hi, good evening, everybody, and thank you for your time. I think it's apparent at this point that a significant amount of trust has been lost with the parents and the wider community throughout this process, and I wanted to address that for a little bit this evening. When we're talking about making changes like this that are going to have a significant impact on school communities and a long-lasting impact on their children's education, parents are justifiably going to demand transparency. They are justifiably going to demand accurate and complete data to support decision-making, and they are justifiably going to demand a seat at the table and a true voice in the process. And I think that it's clear that this process began with a well-constructed narrative that was supported by, at best, incomplete and inaccurate data. Instead of a true, open, and honest dialogue with parents, it was then followed up by community input that limited and restricted feedback that parents could give, most of which was funneled through a well-crafted survey that focused responses on certain data sets that seemed to support a very particular narrative given. And I think that there's been a picture of the parents that are coming here to testify in front of you that we are all sticking our head in the sand, that we are all against change, that we are selfishly just trying to protect our students' communities. And to some degree, that may be true. But I think for a lot of us parents, we see that there is change that needs to be made, that we should be doing better by our students. Some of us, gasp, may even agree that our precious school community should be closed if we trusted it was to the service of building something better. But can you blame us for not having this trust right now? Can you honestly and sincerely blame us for not having that trust? You're being asked to vote for something that you don't have complete data to support. You don't know that the students will fit into the schools. You don't know what the feeder patterns will be, but you're being asked to vote on it. And I think that it would be unfortunate for you as a group to vote for--
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Maria Panian. Maria Panian. Our next speaker is Iris Swan. Our next speaker is Iris Swan. Iris Swan. Our next speaker, Diana LaCulati.
Good evening. I'm Diana Licklider, and I teach at Pittsburgh Conroy. Though I am an employee, I am here tonight to advocate for the parents whose children I serve. I advocate for a family's choice of a school setting that they feel is going to give their child the best opportunities to learn. What does moving the Conroy program to the Southbrook facility have to do with parents' right to choose? As a special educator of 21 years, I know that full-time support is considered to be one of the most restrictive environments. Schools like Conroy, Pioneer, and formerly O C A are unique to the public school system. Other districts do not have one school like it, let alone three. Moving Conroy to the same physical building as Pioneer neatens this up. On paper, it makes a lot of sense. We are down to one special school instead of three. The state doesn't feel threatened, the district is off the hook for their L R E, and we still have a school for students with more significant needs. Problem solved, looks great, let's do it. Except, it is a threat to a parent's choice. Conroy's move to Southbrook barely fits the space. We have been told that at least two of the classrooms that are currently at Conroy will not be moving to Southbrook because there isn't space. As I listen to administration present their facility's feasibility report, over and over again, room for growth was emphasized when schools were deemed feasible. There simply is no room for growth at Southbrook. This is by design. While this fits with bureaucratic agendas, it does not resonate with the hearts of many families here at Conroy. Imagine, if you will, that you have a child with different abilities who just needs more. More attention, more practice, more time, more care. As a parent, you recognize that L R E was put into place to protect students from being isolated. That is the spirit behind it, but it's not your child's reality. You watch as a comprehensive school just doesn't have more to give your child. You watch as your child is isolated within that building. They're bullied, they're shrinking. Then you find Conroy, where your child finds community, where they get the more they need, where they have school dances, music programs, sports programs, friends, where they are loved and accepted and safe. And as a parent with a child with different needs, one who has found a sense of belonging at Conroy, are you going to let anyone tell you that friends that they have made within the walls are less than friends that they could make in a comprehensive school? I assure you, they are not. They are not less than. In fact, I would argue they are so, so much more. Please consider keeping space available to offer families this choice. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Amy McInley.
Hi, my name's Amy McInley. I'm a speech therapist at Conroy. I want to talk about the unique needs of our students and why for them, space isn't just a luxury, it's a necessity. The majority of our students at Conroy have severe intellectual disabilities with I Qs in the 40 to 60 range. Due to the nature of their disabilities, these students cannot participate in regular education curriculum. Every lesson at Conroy is individualized because no two students learn in the same way. For many of our students, reading and writing are skills that remain out of reach. More than half of our students are nonverbal and communicate primarily through their behaviors. Our youngest classrooms resemble preschool environments, as many of the students are functioning at a toddler level. When the teacher mentions the need for nearby bathrooms, it's because each child requires close supervision during those bathroom visits. Think of it like taking your own children to a restaurant. You need several hands to manage them, and even then you face challenges like cramped stalls or an absence of a changing table. That's why proximity and accessibility are so crucial for their safety and comfort. Our teachers are experts in anticipating the needs of these students, often recognizing potential obstacles before they arise. For instance, a seemingly simple situation like a student needing a specific number of muffins at breakfast could quickly escalate if not managed appropriately. If a student cannot express, "I wanted two muffins," the frustration can lead to an aggressive behavior such as hitting, scratching, or even biting. In situations like these, Conroy staff is trained to respond immediately. They're so familiar with our students' needs that these situations don't faze them. Within seconds, support staff is there to help and the student is safely escorted to a calm-down room where they can de-escalate safely with the support of their teacher and staff. In fact, many of the students we receive from regional classrooms, the size of the classrooms at Southbrook, are referred because of their behavior, and it has not been able to be managed in their less restrictive environment. Often labeled as the most difficult student anyone has encountered, these students thrive at Conroy. Why? Because our staff is trained and experienced in meeting these very specific needs. We know that behaviors such as hitting, kicking, disrobing, screaming aren't signs of defiance or bad behavior. They're a result of complex needs that require resources and care. If resources are taken away from the teachers and staff who are the only ones capable of managing these behaviors, both the safety of our students and our staff would be at serious risk. Imagine the scenario I mentioned before, a full-grown student charging a teacher. Without the proper space and resources, this could escalate into a traumatic situation requiring a physical restraint with three staff members needed to manage the student because there is nowhere else for them to go. Or it could result in more vulnerable students, such as the students at Pioneer, becoming injured. Reducing the space and resources at Conroy wouldn't only affect the current students we have, it would infect future students at Pittsburgh Public Schools. If we're forced into a smaller building and there would be no room to
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is T. Rankin. T. Rankin. Our next speaker is Eric Williams.
I come to you tonight as a concerned parent of students at Obama, Kappa, and Linden. Not because, and I am concerned, not because I fear change, but because I perceive a worrying lack of data-driven data decision-making in the proposed facility's utilization plan. All the information I have found so far has given me the strong impression that a plan was conceived before data collection, that anything resembling data analysis has been heavily skewed by cherry-picking and confirmation bias, and that E R S was contracted to tell administrators what they wanted to hear and to present a veneer of due diligence to the board and to the public. When a board member suggested that reasonable cost and benefit calculations are necessary before a vote can be held, the response was that financial analysis wouldn't be feasible until an approved plan was in place. That's absurd. How in the world can the board be expected to evaluate the feasibility of a particular plan if there aren't even estimates of costs and savings from other plans for comparison? In The Art of War, Sun Tzu wrote, "If you are ignorant both of your enemy and of yourself, you are certain in every battle to be in peril." And I believe P P S is in grave peril. P P S does not know itself because it hasn't fully calculated the cost of closing and repurposing schools. How much would be, how much money would be necessary for renovations? How long would it take for us to break even? How many teachers would be needed in a reconfigured district? Fewer, more, at what cost? How many more qualified teachers would there need to be hired? And how many duplicated resources would there be that would have to be purchased to ensure equitable gifted support in every school, especially accounting for greater inclusion of underrepresented minorities? P P S does not know itself because it hasn't prioritized sensible feeder patterns. A demographer should have been hired before even considering how to downsize the district. E R S tried their hand at coming up with attendance zones based on proximity to schools, but I get the impression that they did so only after considering which schools to close or repurpose and that they were in over their heads. In Pittsburgh, distance is a poor proxy for travel time. Here we have hills, valleys, convoluted traffic patterns, endless construction and tunnel monsters that often make travel times to and from a location vastly different. How long it takes to get to and from a school is more important than how far a student lives from it. P P S doesn't know its enemies because it hasn't accounted for its dependence on P R T. Bus routes should be a crucial component to logical feeder pattern design, and P R T's budget uncertainty can't be ignored. Potentially severe state budget cuts have forced P R T to propose service reductions that would cut back or eliminate buses students need. How can P P S suggest changing where students attend if we don't even know if they'll be able to get there? P P S doesn't know its enemies because it hasn't accounted for the potential chaos and lost funding resulting from the dismantling of the Federal Department of Education. Granted, there's too much uncertainty to reach any conclusions or make informed decisions, but there should at least be contingency considerations that account for possible trickle-down effects from budget disruptions. Look, I'm not saying that I oppose any closing or
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Tora Harper.
Hi. I am here on the behalf of Conroy and Michael Kenny. Michael has been attending Conroy since preschool. Michael is now in the eighth grade, which next is high school. Which we all know our loved ones struggle with change. The change will devastate Michael. Michael's well-being. The change will devastate Michael. Michael's well-being, it will, the whole, oh, wait, 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 I'm sorry. Michael's well-being, it will, that will. Wait a minute. I need my glasses. I should have brought them. I am here on the behalf of Conroy and Michael Kenny. Michael has been attending Conroy since preschool. Michael is now in the eighth grade, which next is high school, which we all know our loved ones struggle with change. The change will devastate Michael's well-being. It will destroy the whole family. Michael grown to know, know his love such as friends, teachers. Conroy isn't just a school to my family, it's our support team. And we can go on, but only have three minutes, so I'm not going to talk about how wonderful the staff is just to let you know this will devastate Michael's foundation. If y'all close Conroy, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Dr. Daniel Holland.
Good evening. I'm a postdoctoral fellow at Carnegie Mellon University and Alderweireld Ice graduate. I'm here to talk, shift gears a little bit, to talk about the Transit Revitalization Investment District. There are three taxing bodies that have to vote on this, and one of them is the school board. The city of Pittsburgh has approved it, and it's still pending with Allegheny County as well. And I've done an analysis of this TRID, as it's called, to take a look at the numbers that are being promised and to analyze them a little more carefully. And I also want to thank Director Barker for attending a meeting we had two weeks ago to really talk more about this. First of all, you need to understand that this TRID is huge. It covers from basically Accra Shore Stadium through Manchester, Chateau, Marshall Shadlin, up into Brighton Heights. So it's massive, covering all those neighborhoods. Esplanade project only occupies a very small footprint. This TRID is supposed to last 40 years and may not produce as much economic benefit as promoted. A study done by the city says that the total eligible uses of the TRID are $53 million. So if you stretch that over 40 years, this amounts to only 1.3 million per year. I know there's pressure on the school board to look for additional funding, but 1.3 million a year is not going to be substantial. There are also questions about job production figures. It says that there's 9,300 jobs in 1.5 billion in economic output. That amounts to $159,949 per job. That's just construction. That's a very well-paid construction worker. And then permanent jobs is 4,500, over 30, estimated output of 314 million. That amounts to $69,000 per job. So this is promising some very large figures that I think we all need to ask very seriously when the median income is only 36,000. It's only producing 80 affordable housing units. The city needs 11,126 units, of which 8,200 are affordable households earning under 30% of A M I, which includes a substantial portion of those in Manchester. The median income in Manchester for whites is 94,000, among African-Americans is 30,000. Lastly, nothing is in writing. So all of this is smoke and mirrors.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Terrence Turk.
Good evening. I pushed a button this time. All right. My name is Terrence Turk. I'm a member of the Manchester Neighbors R C O. I want to thank you all for your attention tonight and allowing me to express my thoughts. I also want to applaud all the parents, students, faculty, and community members who have testified thus far or who are still on the agenda to testify. Obviously, from this meeting, this board has two consequential votes coming up pretty soon. One is on school closures. The other one is about the Manchester Chateau TRID vote. I suggest that you vote no on the Manchester TRID. And I'm gonna give you a couple of reasons why. You look confused. You don't think the vote's coming up? Am I mistaken? Okay, all right. So I expect the board members to vote no for a couple of reasons. One, there has not been a community impact study to show how the Esplanade project is going to affect Manchester as a community and the schools. Also, as Dr. Dan just mentioned, there's no written plan on how Manchester will benefit or be impacted by this TRID. Right now, the TRID includes only 80 affordable housing, and that's at an 80% A M I, which means that a family of four would have to make almost over $80,000 in order to afford that, whereas the median household income for Manchester as a whole is just over 62,000. Also, that only, only 25% of the tax income will go to the three taxing bodies, City of Pittsburgh, Allegheny County, and Pittsburgh Public Schools. So 75% of that money is going back into making sure the project is completed. All right? There are a lot of other reasons, a lot of other reasons why this TRID should not be voted or approved. And many of them have been expressed tonight by the parents and faculty and things of that nature, and there's a lot of community members who are going to come and follow me as well that is going to express their reasons why that this, this TRID should not be approved. One of the things is that you give up your leverage. Right now, you can probably try to leverage them to, so that they can come up with the $8 million to fix Conroy School. All right?
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Roberta Bowra. Roberta Bowra. Our next speaker is Liz Ivy.
Good evening. This. I looked up on the internet to see what the role of the school board do. And you have many roles. But one thing that stood out was this statement. "A school board's first responsibility is to the children it serves." "The school board wants to close two of our schools in our neighborhood, and that is Conroy Education Center and Pittsburgh Manchester Pre-K through eight." "I'm especially concerned about Conroy Education Center. This school is dedicated to special education facility, serving students ages five to 21 who have life-scale support, artistic support, and multiple disability support needs." But of course, the board, you know that. Conroy School is like a second home away from home to these students. They are familiar with the surrounding. They're at Conroy. They know where their homeroom is, where the cafeteria and the auditorium is located. They know where the restrooms are and where to line up at. And they love their teachers and friends. This is their routine. Conroy School is like their own little world where they can laugh and play, talk, and act silly with each other. Please don't disrupt their routine by closing the school. This will not only affect the children, but their parents and the teacher as well. Now remember your role. School board's first responsibility is to the children. These children can teach us, us adults, a few things like having compassion one to another, showing respect, not caring about what color your skin is or how much education you have. They have the love of God in their little hearts. These children are of great value, and they are greatly loved by the Lord. Please don't close Conroy Education Center. Our students and school is more valuable than money."
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Evelyn Mitchell.
Good evening, board members. And again, I'd like to say hello to Director Barker again for your continued support and also for attending our last community meeting. This evening, I wanted to speak briefly about the Esplanade Project, a $740 million development plan that surrounds the Manchester neighborhood. I urge you all to vote no. And I say that because we have asked over and over for a community impact study, a planning tool used to assess the potential positive and negative effects of proposed projects. To date, this has not been done. And I'm quite frankly, not surprised. So the only thing I can ask is, what's next? What does our community have to continue to endure? This project will lead to the displacement of longtime black residents from rising property values and will contribute to the vanishing of historically black neighborhoods. This is our legacy. We need to have a seat at the table. In fact, we probably need to be at the head of the table when dealing with this type of investment that's trying to come to our neighborhood. We need to have a voice when decisions and vital issues are being decided upon our lives. Please let it be known that we, the Manchester community, are actively engaged and invested in community development, affordable housing, and education. This has galvanized Manchester neighbors. We are not going anywhere. We will continue to strategize, organize, educate, and mobilize our community. Again, I urge you to please reconsider your vote and also not close Conroy. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Tracy Turner.
Good evening. I come on behalf of Manchester Neighbors. I am a five-generation family member of Manchester. Born and raised there. I asked you not to close Conroy School. I have several family members with disabilities, and they utilize that school. They've adapted and they've come a long way going to Conroy School. I asked you not to close it. You close it, then you have billionaires that come in and buy that school, make that, make that school for condos and put their billionaire friends in that building. If that building will not be used for people like me, low-income, and other people like low-income. I asked you not to, and to vote no. And I also asked you not to give money to the, for the TRID that's going on. That is a, that is a program that is coming into, that's a, it's a, I'm sorry. I'm lost with words because I'm just emotional really about Conroy. Because of my family members. I have a lot of family members with disabilities that utilize that school. So I'm asking you not to close it. And also vote no. Don't do it because you're hurting us. We vote on you, and we put you in these places so that we have confidence in you and that you guys are gonna protect us and have us at your best interests. And we're trusting that you do that. Don't agree with somebody that wants to tear up the neighborhood and use that for something else for their own selfish reason. You have billionaires that are going to come down there, destroy us. Like I said, we were born and raised in Manchester. We built that community. It's, it's a village. We all know one another. And with all that coming in and building up, we can't afford it. Our taxes are gonna go up. It's gonna run us out. And you have people that used to just ride past, wouldn't even come into Manchester, didn't even acknowledge it because they called us a slum community. Now they all want to come in. Gentrification. These expensive houses, I've never, ever heard of such. $500,000 homes sold in Manchester. Never, ever have I heard of such. And they're trying to run us out and bring all these billionaires to make this suitable for them and put us somewhere else. Don't clo, don't close Conroy. I'm asking you to vote no. Don't do it because we need it. Our kids need it. Our kids are our future. And just think, you might not have a child with a disability or a loved one. But in the near future, maybe your niece, your nephew, your sisters, maybe they might. Then you think about it, and you'll, you'll look and say, wow, I see what they were saying. So please don't, don't, don't vote and just say no. And I appreciate you, Barker, for coming to our meeting and hearing our concerns.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Darlene Wiggins. No, Darlene Wiggins. Our next speaker is Pam Pryor. Our next speaker, Rebecca Sweeney. Our next speaker, Rebecca Sweeney. Our next speaker, Khalid Rahim.
Good evening, late evening, good evening. Thank you all for showing up. And I'm glad that you provided an opportunity for the community to have a voice and to have that voice heard. I'm not gonna be very long. I probably won't even take up all of my three minutes because everything that I needed to say or anything I would have said has already been said. A very well-educated group of students, parents, teachers, and staff, and community members and representatives have laid out a very strong case for why Conroy and Manchester and the project should all be voted no. Right? Unless you want to advance gentrification, unless you want to advance even more inequity, right? Unless you want to advance racist public policy, right? Then if you don't want to do that, and I suspect that none of you do, then you should all vote no. So with that, I'll leave the mic. I want to thank you again for the opportunity. Do the right thing, right? Stand on the right side of history. It's kind of ironic, and I need to say this. Several decades ago, when the gang violence was really running wild throughout Pittsburgh and Allegheny County, the city of Pittsburgh and Allegheny County were both in denial. The most progressive public entity that we could depend on was the Pittsburgh School Board. The school board got it right. They said kids were killing each other because they saw the impact of those shootings and killings and that dysfunction every day as teachers and as staff within Pittsburgh Public Schools. The city said it was all copycat, but the kids were falling like flies. It wasn't copycat, it was a real problem. And so we could depend on the school board to do the right thing and to take a much more progressive position. Three decades later, and 30,000 children later, because back in those days, I think the district was supporting and teaching about 55,000 children. Now it's under, what, 20,000? So all I can say to you again, in this decade, in this century, do the right thing again.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Dee Gouda. Dee Gouda. Our next speaker is Tyra Caldwell. Tyra Caldwell. Our next speaker is Deborah Banks. Deborah Banks. Our next speaker is Renee Marshall.
Good evening. I am Renee Marshall, retired PPS special education teacher who completed 34 years of service. My professional craft flourished while student-teaching at Conroy Education Center from September to December 1977, and I see how it's grown over the decades. I also have a cousin, a young cousin, who is a student at Conroy, and she is flourishing, she's thriving. And I can't bear to think that your conscience would have her school closed. My understanding of Conroy is that the roof is in a state of severe disrepair. But that being so, why was it permitted to disintegrate, not to be renovated, remodeled, to continue the extensive range of benefits to students ages five, C-21, who currently have life skills and artistic support plus multiple disability provisions? The immense onsite programs provided in the areas of cognitive, therapeutic, social, and behavioral needs, extensive vocational training for employment goals upon graduation, independent living skills, along with the involved professional staff connecting students and families with specially-designed community agencies prior to graduation will be watered down or end with its elimination. You like to use the word closure, closed no. They're being eliminated. Being forced into South Brook 6 through 8, located in Brookline, would require an extensive overhaul to reconstruct and incorporate what currently exists at Conroy. There are plenty of empty PPS buildings. Sell one of them to acquire monies, such as Beltsilver Elementary, which has lain dormant for decades, that I now see dumpsters and workers on location now. What is that about? Voila. Use those monies to pay for Conroy's new roof. No need to turn it into a Taj Mahal Conroy condominium, furthering the gentrification ravishment in Manchester, in this case displacing Conroy students. I was caught up in the 2006 elimination of 18 schools, 21 buildings, where faculty, staff, and students were displaced. The educational and financial fallout to the Knoxville and other feeder communities never recovered, as you see when traveling through, as I do every day. As board members, please examine what Conroy offers to benefit the futures of each student, their families, and guardians. Vote on Wednesday to save Conroy from a proposed chopping block. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Paul Scott.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak and express my concerns. I'm Paul Scott and a member of Manchester Neighbors. And also a 1975 graduate of Pittsburgh Public Schools. I graduated at 16 years old. And at the time, I felt that there was potential poured in me. I felt that I was being invested into, and I felt that there was nothing that I could not accomplish. And I believe that for any child who feels that they are being invested into, you never know the impact that you could have upon a child when they feel valued, when they feel that they're being invested into, that they could achieve greatness and that there's nothing that's impossible for them to achieve. And so I encourage you to say no to this Esplanade TRID project and invest in the children who are the, the future of our next generation, who feel valued, who feel hope, who feel that they can achieve anything that's possible by knowing that they're being invested into. And you know, and I believe that, I had a, I had a different script, but I just felt that just the investment needs to be placed in the children. I believe that God cares for the children, the lower-income, the poor and needy. And Proverbs 31:8-9 says, "To speak up for those who can't speak for themselves. Speak up for the right for all those who are poor and disadvantaged. Speak up and judge fairly. Speak up and judge for those who are poor and needy." And Manchester Neighbors intends to keep speaking up, keep coming back, keep asking for fair justice until our voices are heard and the citizens of Manchester and their children are treated fairly. And if God be for us... Amen.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Iris Rudolph.
I just want to address the possibility of you voting on a plan to give tax credit for the revitalization investment for the district for Esplanade. There could be a lot of things down under current, underneath, that needs to be looked at. So I would suggest that there would be a plan that would need to happen before you give a tax credit for something. And it happened in Manchester several years ago when the electric company moved out and they decided to build new houses, calling it, I think, Columbus Commons or something. State had to come in and give us a half a million dollars to clean up the toxins that were in the ground before they could put the houses there. So I just wanted to give you that tidbit of information just in case you needed that, just so you'd know that, I mean, because I pay my taxes. I don't want my tax credits to go to something like that. I've been paying my taxes since, what, '79? My daughter's 54. My granddaughter's 33. I don't have anybody in school. I already own my house. So I don't, none of this has anything directly to do with me except for the fact that it shouldn't be, period. Okay? Okay? And the other thing I wanted to just say was about the Columbus School. Just take one thing in your budget and look at the busing. The cost of the maintenance, because it's not just the bus, it's the cost of the maintenance, it's the cost of the driver's salaries, the insurance. It's the cost of the gas, the oil, the mechanics, the ground that the buses sit on, the garage, or whatever you want to call it. Who gets, who gets paid for cleaning off the snow? You have to think of all those things when you're doing a budget and looking at what you're spending. So it's not just, oh, we're gonna bus the kids to somewhere. And there's two scriptures. One that says, "Count the cost before you build." And the other one comes from Matthew 7:26. "But those who..." And this is from the Living Translation. "But those who hear my instructions and ignore them are foolish, like a man who builds his house on sand." Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Stanley Low.
I'm 75 years old. I've lived a long time. I've seen a lot. I went to Manchester Elementary School, the one that got torn down. I went to Conroy. Then every day, I walked to Oliver High School. I saw them tear down that school. I saw the highway come in. I've seen a lot. I've seen a lot of things that many of you haven't seen. Director Barker, you are to be congratulated. We call, you show up. And we thank you for that. I want to talk about the Esplanade Plan. I'm not asking you to vote no. I'm not asking you to do that. I'm asking you to vote absolutely no. Why? Let me start at the end. I think there's a guy here, probably as old as I am, R. Weiss. He sent you a resolution that you ought to read. On the last line of the resolution, it says, "It wouldn't pass the test in a classroom. Expected benefits." It doesn't name what the benefits are. It says, "Expected benefits." Would you vote on an expected plumber fixing my house? Expected doctor fixing my valves? You gotta read the resolution. It goes further to state, or imply, there is no community benefits. There is no community impact statement. There's no agreement for affordable housing. Do you understand right now that there are over 70, 80 vacant buildings in Manchester that there is no affordable housing plan for? Do you understand this developer who's gonna give expected benefits? Already got $30 million from the state? Couldn't even put up $2 million maybe to help fix up Manchester? But you're gonna get some expected benefits? I can tell you point-blank, we ain't got none. No. I don't want you to vote no. I want you to vote absolutely no. want you to vote absolutely no. By the way, let me ask you a question. Have you visited the site? Have you stood on that ground? By the way, have you personally read the agreement? Have you read it? Or did you just get a note or a recommendation from R. Weiss that you think this is something we should do? Each one of you, in your heart, as Brother Cleet said, you know the right thing to do. You know. How are you going to let this man do seven-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar development on expected benefits? Can't work. Shouldn't work that way. When you take the time to really understand what's going on, you've already seen it happen before. You know the name. It's called East Liberty.
Thank you for your testimony. Lauren Apt.
Good evening. Thanks to Dr. Barker for his leadership in attending a meeting in Manchester recently, which gave me the opportunity to enter Conroy for the first time. I already found the plan's closure of Conroy unimaginable, but after seeing the building and hearing from parents there, I believe that closing Conroy is unconscionable. I don't have a student at Conroy, but I live in Manchester, and our neighborhood would be devastated to lose the students and school community. I feel proud that our neighborhood has provided so many of the things that Conroy parents and staff appreciate about its location, and I'm grateful that our community gets to have these amazing students around us. Over the last few months, we have heard testimony of the most wonderful things from the English language learning families and staff and the Conroy School community lean into this. What are these schools and programs doing right? How can we replicate that, uphold these successes, rather than disrupt and disinvest in them? I'm not the parent of an English language learner or a student in need of the amazing opportunities that Conroy offers, but I'm telling you that we will all be better off if we meet the needs of these students. All of that to say, it is obvious to everyone here that the plan presented to the board was half-baked, and data shows it is not feasible either. Closing Conroy is unconscionable and only a piece of the unconscionable act of initiating the process of closing schools without more information. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is Kathleen O'Brien.
Good evening. Sorry I can't see you. I forgot my glasses, but I did write something. So we have asked for details. What will happen to buildings, to programs, staff? How much will this cost? Where will kids go? How will they get there? There is no plan, just disruption. Reorganizing at this time in this way is just bad. We are losing support of the Department of Education, losing jobs, losing green cards, food insecurity, loss of Title X protections, forty bus routes to be eliminated, twelve neighborhoods without bus service. There is pointless chaos everywhere for everyone right now. Going forward at this time with the proposal at its current state is irresponsible. Families and kids need stability. If PPS can't provide that, students will go somewhere else. Please work out the details instead of asking us to just trust you on this. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is Karen Cornell.
Good evening. I'm a proud PPS parent and graduate, and I was relieved this fall to hear that the FU plan was on hold because there were clearly issues with it. And I expected that Dr. Walters and the board would have spent the time hiring a demographer and reflecting on all of the feedback that has already been provided by the community. I was disappointed to hear that this has not happened. I believe that trust and respect are earned, yet pushing this forward without information erodes the trust that you are trying to build. How can I trust the district with this plan when critical information is missing? I am still not clear on what we are trying to achieve with these closures. I do not know, is the purpose truly cost savings? Is it to just close schools? Is it to improve equity? I am not hearing a clear and compelling vision. It is a mistake to move forward to close individual schools when we need to have a clear vision for the whole district. We cannot jump forward to where we are talking about individual schools in this next hearing process, because we won't be looking at the whole system. So many others tonight have spoken much more eloquently, clearly, specifically than I have, and they have so many concerns. Please listen to them. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is April Williams. April Williams. The next speaker is Deborah Blackwell Battle.
I'd like to say good evening, and I know this has been a long, long night. So, one of the things that I'd like to say to everyone is that when you give your time, I would like to say thank you, because that's something that you cannot give back, is time. So I want to thank everyone for being here. But I really would like to say that I am a Manchester resident. I'm a fourth-generation Manchester resident. So like Mr. Lowe, I went to Old Manchester and New Manchester, Conroy. He walked the Oliver, but I walked the Allegheny. We've heard a lot about the Espinard project, and the more you hear about it, the more you realize that it's a shell game. It's a shell game because nothing is in writing concerning how this project is going to affect the neighbors who live in Manchester. Houses is going for a half a million dollars. The median income for African-Americans is only thirty thousand, two-hundred-and-five dollars. So they're telling us that the AMI is eighty thousand dollars for a family of four, and this is the reason that I'm calling it a shell game. I'm calling it a shell game because it supports gentrification. African-Americans are systematically erased from participating in the housing that we may or may not see. Forty years is a long time with nothing put in writing about how this project is going to affect our community. And it's affecting our community in so many ways. First of all, we're not going to be able to afford it. And the other thing is the jobs. There's no promise about apprenticeships for students in the neighborhood. There's no promise for activities or recreational activities that African-American males would even want to be a part of. So I ask you to vote no on the Espinard project, and I ask you to vote no on closing the ten schools, especially Conroy in Manchester, and also King, because I'm going to give a shout-out to Dawn Gordon. She's doing a good job at King now. Every time a school was...
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is Phyllis Bacon. Phyllis Bacon. The next speaker is Reverend Artis Coleman.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Reverend Artis Coleman, and I am a member of the Manchester Neighbors. I used to go to Manchester School. We were the one that created the theme there in the color purple and gold with the tiger. And also, I was the last class that graduated from Conroy. But I just want to be real brief here. In prayer, listening to everything that's being said and spoken here, my heart is very heavy, because I'm praying and I'm asking God, and because I'm hearing about close, 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 close. So God gave me this out of C-L-O-S-C, close, community. L, lowering their standards. O, opportunity to leave open. S, separate, put in separation with families. E, emptying the lives that are supposed to be important. I, at a very young age, I went up to Manchester School to kill myself. I wanted to commit suicide. And what got me back on track was the community, was the teachers that went to the school. This thing is so heavy on me. No, I don't have any students, or I don't have any children to go to the school, but this is deep. This is blowing my mind, because I never thought that we would be at this place in Manchester. Conroy. I go out and I watch the kids, the teachers taking the students from Conroy around the neighborhoods, and I see people in the houses engaging with them, speaking to them. This is deep, guys. And guess what? I know that you already got your mind made up on what you're going to do. I believe that. But I'm asking you right now, tonight, when this is all over, please step in and just go beyond yourselves and think about the impact of families, these babies. We're community, guys. We're community, and money is not what it's all about, but it's the lives of the ones that we say we're going to pour into. This is deep for me, and it's heavy, but here's what I'm going to leave you with. I'm going to pray for each and every one of you that the right thing will be done. It's not about the money, but it's about the right thing with integrity and character that needs to be done. God bless.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is English Burton. English Burton. The next speaker is Carol Green. Carol Green.
Good evening. I am a longtime resident of Manchester. I've lived there over three decades. I feel that the community and that Espinard project is not for the community and the residents of Manchester. I also feel that Conroy and the other schools should remain. They are vital parts of the community. And I just don't want to be, I'm speaking for a community and myself. I do not want to be displaced, because I'm not going to be able to be a longtime resident. If they go through with the plan, there's nowhere else that I'm going to be able to go, because I am there permanently, and I don't want to move and be taken advantage of with the new projects that are coming into effect, because my income will not allow me to be able to afford whatever's being brought into this community. And I just really want to remain in Manchester and be a part of the community, and be held and understand what's going on. And it's not right, some of the stuff that's been going on, and we're not aware of it. So I vote no to closing the schools, and absolutely and definitely no to the Espinard project. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is Maddie Williams. Maddie Williams. The next speaker is Anthony Williams. Anthony Williams. The next speaker is Norma Tatum. Nora Tatum. The next speaker is Norma Jean Barnes. Norma Jean Barnes. The next speaker is Emily Sawyer.
Vote no on Agenda Items twelve-point-zero-two, seventeen-zero-three, seventeen-zero-four, and seventeen-zero-five. Unless my comments seem like a personalized grievance, I'll start with some context. The dismantling and destabilizing of black families and neighborhoods has many through lines, including redlining, restrictive covenants, white flight, highway construction, urban renewal, the wars on drugs and poverty, mass incarceration, charter expansion, real estate development, and gentrification. Add to that the fact that private interests have been profiting off of public education while politicians drain schools' resources, and one result is that neighborhood schools are left to struggle while we blame them for our failures and threaten to close them. Locally and immediately, there is real doubt and disagreement about whether public funding of private developments like the ones in twelve-oh-two, seventeen-oh-four, and seventeen-oh-five actually benefit communities and cities as a whole. And the next thing this district will be doing is telling us we need to raise property taxes while we are using our kids' education money to do site development for a private multimillion-dollar development company. Businesses and developers should be expected to be a part of this community they are moving into and see their taxes as an investment in the common project of our city. Our kids can't wait forty years for these dollars. There has been no independent impact study done so that Manchester residents can weigh costs and benefits of the TRID or the Espinard development as a whole. The affordable units are not actually affordable. There are no guarantees about what kinds of jobs, benefits, or salaries the promised jobs will deliver, or how these jobs will employ Manchester residents. There is no plan for right-to-stay or right-to-return programs to protect the community's longtime residents, or those that have already been displaced. And it's a little bit offensive that all these infrastructure and safety improvements are being prioritized and touted as a benefit to the residents now that big developers come knocking and white gentrifiers start to show up, when the city and business community have spent the last decades of, the last number of decades, not making these important investments for the people who actually already and historically live in this neighborhood, all while our schools face closure. The closure of Conroy and the loss of Neighborhood Public Elementary School would be sharp blows for this community that has been weathering these kinds of blows for decade and suffering the indignity of unkept promises. Closing schools is not radical or innovative. Closing schools is the status quo. This isn't about an aversion to hard choices. This is about the fact that we don't even know if or why school closure is the hard choice we need to make. ERS recommended the district hire a demographer in October twenty-twenty-four, but the RFP didn't go out until this month. What if the demographer's data contradicts the schools' name for closure on this resolution? We are missing so much information that we need to inform this plan. Can we schedule hearings if the public doesn't have information to make informed comments during those hearings? And we have yet to hear how any of the proposed changes are expected to positively impact the academic goals we have for our students. It is extremely important to vote no on Resolution seventeen-oh-three or to table it. Get the demographer's data and the info...
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is Marissa F. Marissa F. The next speaker is Christine Porter.
Hello. I'm Christine Porter, an attorney...
I'm Christine Porter, an attorney with Education Law Center's Pittsburgh office. We are a statewide nonprofit dedicating to ensuring that students with disabilities in Pennsylvania have access to a quality public education, particularly the most underserved students. I'm asking you tonight to continue to center transparency, racial equity, and the voices of students and families while considering whether to close any schools, including the 10 schools on the current list. And I want to share some specific concerns raised with the Education Law Center about the proposed closing of Conroy. So we run a helpline at Education Law Center, and we are hearing from a significant number of families concerned about potential school closures. Specifically, we have received a number of calls from parents of students at Conroy, a school where 100% of its nearly 200 students are students with significant disabilities. As you've heard tonight, these parents are concerned about the proposed move to the Southbrook Building without sufficient planning and whether such a move could meet their students' educational needs. As we've heard, a closure of Conroy and a move of these students to Southbrook would presumably require extensive renovations. Conroy has features not present at Southbrook, such as classrooms with bathrooms inside them for students who need support with toileting skills and nearby community partnerships set up to promote employment skills. Does the district have a plan to meet those students' needs at Southbrook? Even if closing and moving Conroy rather than renovating the existing building would save money, which we don't know at this point, moving hundreds of educationally vulnerable children without a solid protective plan during a time of diminished federal protection of student civil rights is not the way to lower the district's costs. As is clear from the many community voices tonight, Pittsburgh's schools are more than just buildings, they are communities. We at ELC share concerns raised by other speakers tonight about the potential impact of school closures on the district's most underserved students. Please ensure that the students, families, and communities are centered in the decision-making process and are a critical part of designing solutions. Please put students first. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is Evelyn Ules.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Evelyn Ules, mother of a first-garter boy in Waslar. Today, I want to give you my testimony about the negative impact of closing PPS School on mental health, social skill, and transportation. My son have only six years old. We will have, if we close the PPS School, Waslar, we will have a high percent of children's between in five and nine age experience anxiety, first, adjustment difficult, behavioral changes, sleeping, and eating issue. I am aware of this because in February 2024, we was passed for really hard situation and we have to leave home and move on shelter. This decision have to relocate and house and school. The mind my son break when he know I have to changing the school. He affair for the newer school, new house, new located, for do everything again. It's only one year pass. Now imagine my mind to think, hey, I have to planning again, changing him and other school is crazy. I know every children's have different reaction in front to the changes, but it's impossible doesn't imagine what happened in the mind, one child for changing again on the school. And the social skill for me, I say my son have six years old. Children's between in age five and nine developing a skill to make friends, understand, respect, and follow social roles and express their emotional. I will be interruption a natural process because if the children's experience have, they have more opportunity for level the anxiety and for don't have opportunity for expression his personal feelings. For the transportation, two years ago, my son and me have to walking 25 minutes for get to a school, 25 minutes for get to a school and for back home too, 50 minutes. I'm single mother, low income, imagine my challenge because I have to spend $25 for buy weekly pass if I can walking for the weather crazy season or situation or had $7 for one.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is Soraya Bay.
Until someone can tell me why we're advocating to keep the schools open, I'm going to keep saying the same thing until it makes sense. It's easy for parents and constituents to complain about the proposal, but I don't think many are taking the time to know and understand the why. The district has the real estate to serve 40,000 students, yet less than 19,000 are enrolled and the district is in a deficit. Make it make sense. Half the schools don't have enough students enrolled to make the operations of the building make sense fiscally. Make it make sense. Yes, education is more important than money, but a district can't operate without money or even ensure the students get the resources they need. To be clear, I'm not defending the district because there are generational issues beyond what's seen on the outset or even funding. What I am defending is the consolidation of schools because I can promise you, some of these schools are not the environment anyone should send their children to. The district is doing future generations this service because they're not getting the academic or life skills they need to be functioning adults that can contribute to the betterment of society or even themselves. If the school leaves space for no structure, the students to run the school via disrespecting faculty, staff, and themselves, disrespect by tone and language to their peers and adults, going to class or even showing up to school when they feel like it, doing drugs and gambling on the premises, burnt-out faculty to be lax in their teachings, if they're teaching at all, dumbing down the curriculum and graduation rates to make the numbers look good, but students are grade levels behind. Why is the majority advocating to keep this kind of environment open for your children? I can go on, and while many were angry, I went public about the major inadequacies of the Black College Tour in 2019. The motive is still the same. The kids deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is Emily Kane.
Hi. Thank you for still being here tonight. I have been hearing that the mic has gone really quiet for the galley. So for the galley, how is it now?
Still bad.
Still, still bad. How is it down there for you? Great. I'm Emily Kane. I'm a therapist. I'm a teacher. In my 22-year career, I've worked in private schools, public schools, special education facilities, now it's working, and in student behavioral health programs. I'm also a parent of three students in the district, including a student at PPS Fulton. I've also worked in the private sector as an operations executive in tech. It's like the least important thing to say. I'm, I'm carrying all of those experiences with me into the room tonight. And what I have observed in this very long night is that our community is showing up. Our community is trying to speak to you. And our community really, really cares about what you decide to do next for our neighborhoods and for our children. In my work as a therapist, one of the things that we work on a lot in the room, in the moment, is dealing with interpersonal contempt. And so I am going to read to you all a little bit about what that is. And I'd like to ask all of us to just check ourselves. Have we held these feelings in our bodies tonight? Have we listened to someone else speak and had this experience within ourselves? Interpersonal contempt is a feeling of disregard, disrespect, and dislike toward another person, often accompanied by a sense of superiority and can manifest through criticism, sarcasm, and condescension. Contempt is a major predictor of relationship breakdown. There we go. Contempt is the opposite of what is needed in a space with dignity and respect was, I took my finger off the button. Yeah. Did I restart the timer? Will you let me know when I'm done? In our buildings, people show up every day to do really, really important jobs, jobs like taking out the trash, jobs like helping children tie their shoes, jobs like sitting with a child to do the extra work to make sure someone knows how to read. They don't get paid very much to do these jobs, but it's really important that they show up to do their work. The title of my talk was "To the Superintendent's Office," to you, Dr. Walters. Please do your job. All of your employees show up every day, making sure that their jobs are well-done for the sake of children. Your teachers show up. Your parent instructors show up. We want you to show up. We want you to show up in operational excellence, which would include providing information about the potential outcomes and impacts of the proposals before us tonight. I am asking you to vote no on closing any buildings in the upcoming process, but I'm also here to say I hope we get more information.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is Melinda Mix.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Walters. My name is Melinda Mix. I'm an itinerant English language development teacher. I have come to almost every public hearing since last summer, asking you to consider the needs and challenges of our English learner students as part of your facilities utilization plan. The day after I came here to speak last month, I watched the administration's presentation of the feasibility study. Not once, not even once, did you mention English learner students or the existing ESL Center schools, or where you might locate ESL Center schools in the future, or how current feeder patterns impact English learners, or how feeder patterns might change for English learners attending ESL Center schools. Not until the entire presentation was over and board members were invited to comment where our English learner students mentioned. I want to thank Directors Silk and Yord for asking about our students and whether or not they had been considered. I also want to thank Director Talafaro for asking about the community proposal and whether the plan had ever been seriously considered. I'd like you to know that the leaders of the community proposal actually contacted teachers, asked for our ideas, and then valued our opinions enough to include them in their plan. That proposal, put together by parents and invested community members with input from teachers and other stakeholders, now seems to be a more thoughtful and comprehensive plan than anything I've seen here in the last eight months. The regional model that they recommended would address a lot of the concerns that have been raised about both the current school arrangement and the facilities utilization plan. At that presentation, one of the board members said, quote, "I feel like we lose sight that our ultimate goal is really creating this district that is a modern district using innovative practices." When I started coming to these hearings, it was to propose and support a modern, innovative approach to educating English learners, such as creating an academy for secondary newcomer students and choosing to be careful and thoughtful about where and how we educate our English learners at all levels. This is what premier school districts do. But clearly, there is a lack of interest, concern, or even acknowledgement on the existence of our students. I can now see that it was a fool's errand. I do not have an attachment to any particular school building in the district. I've worked at too many of them, only to the many students that we see struggling and falling behind without the appropriate support. As far as I'm concerned, you can close whatever buildings you want, but your current plan essentially maintains the status quo in terms of English learner programming and support, which is replete with inequity. And there's that equity word again, the one that you claim is so important to you that you put in all your presentations, but please show us that you are interested in actually providing it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is Billy Hauman.
Hi, I'm Billy Hauman, President of the Pittsburgh Federation of Teachers, and thanks for still being here. You're now less than 48 hours away from setting in motion a school closure reorganization plan that will be harder to stop once it gets your initial okay. I am sure it needs to look different than what is before you right now. There are problems with the building utilization numbers. The report admits that the attendance zones and feeder patterns may shift after the yet-to-be-hired demographer does their work. And despite the good words about equitable learning environments, the district does not have a good record on addressing and supporting positive learning environments. Without meaningfully addressing the teaching and learning environment, any reorganization will be meaningless and the decline in enrollment will not stop. By the way, if, if and when I write my memoirs, the title will be, this is the only part I have done so far, will be, "If you want to get someone to believe something that is not true, put a number on it." At the center of the plan is percent utilization. The capacity of the buildings was based on identifying classrooms and assigning the numbers of students for each classroom using the teacher contract. The individual room capacities are then added up to get the building capacity. To get the percent utilization for a school, the real school enrollment is then divided by the building capacity and the quotient is multiplied by 100. What this, what this statistic fails to do is account for what really happens in a school. Master schedules do not work that way. It's never the case that every school classroom is in use with the target number of students every period, all day. That is what 100% utilization means. In high schools, students may have eight classes, teachers have five or six instructional assignments, teachers have prep periods, also known as coverages these days, a duty assignment, and a professional period. If every high school teacher taught six periods, which would be a contract violation, it would take 1.33 teachers for every classroom to achieve the 100% utilization. It is not possible that the jigsaw puzzle of a complex master schedule that meets the instructional needs of every student will settle on 30 students in each class, each period, all day long. In fact, 80% would be a very crowded school. When Colfax was around 1,000 students, it lived the misery of nearly 100% utilization, art on a cart, music on a cart, two teachers, two teachers teaching their classes in the same room, some services in the hallway. Do not believe that 100% utilization is an optimum. Planning for 89% at Arlington, 94 at Stair, is not wise. Neither is 86 for Liberty or 93 for Sunnyside. It will be too crowded. We, we, we need, excuse me.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is Annette Hall.
Good evening, PPS Board. As you can probably tell, I'm so thrilled to be here with you all instead of at home spending time on nightly routines, eating our favorite meal, my kid's favorite meal, spaghetti and meatballs, and making memories with my girls. Jean, you at one point said it was important, if it's important, you'll make it work. You'll always, you will make it a way to do it. Well, here I am, while my girls are at home making memories and I'm missing, missing that to fight against reckless choices and votes being made that will only harm all the children by the school board. Recently, one of you on the board stated kids are resilient. Let me read this real quickly to you. It's a quote from a podcast, Allison Villa, which I'm going to send to your emails. Take a listen to it. It's a really good podcast, and it's only 20 minutes. It's pretty common to hear people reassure each other or themselves with a phrase, "Don't worry, kids are resilient." This say- This saying is used as a way to minimize the effects of trauma, hardships, or stress on growing minds. It implies resilience is the ability to bounce back without too many lasting effects. It's an intimate trait that all childrens are born with. It assumes that going through hard things is just makes kids stronger automatically. This, in fact, isn't actually the case. This commonly saying is not only inaccurate and reducinalistic, but actually dangerous. Resilience is something that must be learned and nurtured through the secure attachment bond. It just doesn't develop on its own. And while resilience is especially timely and important concept right now, developing resilience is extremely valuable for maintaining mental health in general. And childhood is by far the best time to do it. There are many life circumstances that can strongly impact a child, from changing schools to moving or losing or being unable to visit a loved one. So with that being said, with what I shared, stop counting on kids to be resilient to accommodate poor decision-making and voting to close buildings without all the data. It's just careless and reckless and harms our children. Many of you know my youngest daughter, Madeline, my sweet third grader at Wolf Slayer. Over this past summer, she witnessed a shooting, which is not only traumatic, extremely traumatic to myself, but to her. She is also a COVID child who missed so much in her childhood. Now she fears not just losing her, not losing her school building, but her programs, her teachers, and her friends due to not having enough seats for all these students with the closings of these buildings. Again, kids are not born resilient. The data that I have shows that. I've done the research. I'm going to actually leave you guys a paper you can pick up before you leave. These kids have to learn to be resilient, and these teachers and programs are a huge part of that. I'm not against closing school buildings as a whole. I know that many may have to close, but it's harmful to rush this process. And as for, also, just to end this, shedding people's voices out by taking away virtual time.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is Virginia Hormillo. Virginia Hormillo. The next speaker is Angel Guber. Angel Guber. The next speaker is Amy Williams. Amy Williams.
I'm a PPS parent at Wolf Slayer. My kid's in fifth grade. I just wanted to say, hearing the Conroy parents and staff talk tonight, they are the experts at what their specific needs are. Please don't tell them what they need. Please genuinely listen to what they identify their needs are because they are the experts. My kid's in fifth grade at Wolf Slayer. We chose Wolf Slayer back in 2019 because of STEAM program, small class size, diversity, walkability. These are things that we did not find at other schools that we looked at. My kid has thrived at Wolf Slayer. He loves the STEAM program. Just the other night, he shared with me a video game that he made on a program that his STEAM teacher introduced him to. He's 10 years old and he coded a video game. That's pretty awesome. My son won't be at Wolf Slayer next year, but I believe other kids should have that same opportunity he had at the Engage in Curriculum Dedicated Teachers and Staff at Wolf Slayer, a school that has existed as a school building for 128 years. Something is working there if it has existed as a school for 128 years. Please vote no to the current plan. It's severely lacking data. We need basic finances, hire the demographer and listen to their data, transportation details, feeder patterns. If we are truly aiming for excellence, we need details. No one achieves excellence with a vague rough-in of a plan. Students do not get a better experience by packing our school, and this plan increases student-teacher ratios. Walkability is healthy, supports sustainability, and connects us to community. This plan, as far as like my school goes, I don't know the details of others, decreases walkability for our families. Looking at PPS history, closing schools seems to be a short-term solution, a recurring cycle every few years. And what are the results? Families are leaving the city and declining enrollment. This plan is not the only way. PPS doesn't exist in a bubble. There are other plans happening. Allegheny County Climate Plan is interested in walkability and sustainable transportation options. There's the City of Pittsburgh Comprehensive Plan coming up. There's a PRT redesign. These need to be congruent. And ultimately, we should be focusing our efforts at the state level to get our $22 million a year back. Just think, with that money, we could be talking about having conversations.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is Shannon Stringer.
Good evening. I've thought long and hard about what to say tonight, but I am tired, and so are all of you, I am sure. But I have a special kind of exhaustion because every day I wake up facing some fresh horror story about how my daughter's very existence is being devalued by this government. I am fighting battles to keep her Medicaid, DEI initiatives, NIH funding that improves her quality of life, her civil rights protections. It's exhausting and terrifying. But the one thing I can rely on is school and the teachers at Fulton. It's the one consistency in her life right now. And Fulton was there for us when other schools in PPS were not. Like so many Conroy parents that were here tonight, I understand how important it is to defend the safe space because for parents like us, it's rare. I feel protective of Fulton and the community, for the 25% of students with IEPs at Fulton whose families can't make it to these meetings, for the amazing teachers who serve their needs every day, for Sienna's amazing PCA who works harder than anyone I know, Ms. Courtney. You can continue to ignore my voice, so I will say it yet again. The data you are using to close Fulton is wrong. In this age of misinformation, I find it to be the height of gaslighting to continue to say that Fulton isn't ADA accessible when my daughter uses the elevator every single day. 24 students are not in closets, like the data says. It's a violation of their civil rights to use this data again and again, and it is also insulting to Sienna. This past Friday was World Down Syndrome Day. I had the joy of teaching second grade about what that means. That's what inclusion looks like. It's what real diversity looks like. Fulton is 75% black. 26% of the students have IEPs, and the majority are economically disadvantaged. The very students the Department of Education was created to protect. The very students who would normally have recourse through the Office of Civil Rights if it were still functioning. I filed a complaint about this flawed discriminatory data this summer. I was told to refile after the vote, which is scheduled this Wednesday, but the Office of Civil Rights isn't there anymore. And I see what's happening. We all do. You're not interested in changing the flawed data. You would rather rush a vote. You have had months to correct this, and you haven't corrected it. There are variables that could change things here, looming federal funding, new feeder patterns, new.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is Emily Wiggins. Emily Wiggins. The next speaker is Timothy Caldwell. Timothy Caldwell. The next speaker is Rachel Slosser. Rachel Slosser. The next speaker is James Fogarty.
Good evening and thank you. Sorry I missed you earlier. I know I'm the last one for the night, so I'll try and keep this short. Look, our current system of schools isn't working for too many of our children. Huge gaps in achievement, opportunities, and access to supports create a system that works very well for some, but not for all. This is a problem that has been a long time in the making and past solutions have left the public rightly skeptical that this time can be different. While there is broad agreement that we need to create lasting, sustainable change for all of our children, especially the black, brown, and disabled children historically underserved by the system, there is rightful concern around how the current set of facilities proposals will help us get there. As an organization, we too have concerns about converting Arlington from a pre-K to 5 to a middle school without further information about demographic trends as a school has continued to see kindergarten enrollment increases over the past few years. Yet, these specific concerns, we believe, would best be addressed community by community. Meetings where we're provided with data and information, we need to understand the trade-offs being made and how those changes sit in a larger context of district improvement. We know that keeping the status quo is not an option. And currently, 25 of the 50 regular schools within PPS have concentrations of poverty that are higher than 80%. The average size of these schools is less than 300 students. 82% of students in schools where concentrations of poverty are 75% or higher are students of color. Over half the white students, 53% in the district, attend schools where the concentration of poverty is less than 50%. And in our middle schools, only 10% of our students take algebra, in part because 10 schools did not offer it, and only 18% take a world language. K to 12 segregation has been shown to widen racial achievement gaps, gaps created by the cumulative differences in educational opportunities. In Pittsburgh, the gap between black and white third-grade reading achievement is 41 percentage points. And the gap between black and white eighth-grade math achievement is 32 percentage points. We know the factors that are leading to these gaps here in Pittsburgh. Schools with declining enrollments cut back on staffing and programming and create a spiral of decline that leads families to opt for magnets, charters, private schools, or leaving the district altogether. Yet, in all of these schools, there are amazing assets, families, teachers, and community programs that are working hard to provide children the high-quality education they deserve. At Pittsburgh Perry, Arlington, and Malions, we've had the privilege of working hand-in-hand with educators and leaders that are working diligently to address the systemic issues that make the promise ever more challenging. As we think about changes needed to deliver on this vision laid out in your strategic plan, we must also address the systems issues that are intertwined with how many buildings we have. Staffing issues, budgeting, operations, transportation that if unaddressed will lead us back here in the future. We need from this board and administration a clear vision about what our schools will look like and how they will improve after the changes are made. Specifically, what are the feeder patterns? What are your targets for socioeconomic diversity? How will school-support staff and leadership be helped through this transition? How will we keep staffs together that have gotten great results for kids? Most of the.
Thank you for your testimony. This concludes the testimony portion of the public hearing. At this time, I will turn this meeting back to President Walker.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gandy, Ms. McBride, Ms. Crichton, for facilitating tonight. Thank you to all of our families and teachers and students and community members who came out. I think it is, I think it is pretty apparent that we all have the same end goal in mind, which is high-class, high-quality education for our students. The work that we have to do now is to figure out if we can find a road that we can travel together to do that. And I think as a board, we are committed to continue to find those roads together. And so it is a long night. It is late. It is just shy of 11 o'clock. So we've all put in a little bit of extra overtime, but I do appreciate it. And we look forward to the next time we are all together. Have a good night and be safe if you are driving home tonight.